Alrighty, thank you. Alrighty, let's go ahead and get started. Let's do the pledge allegiance first, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Morganelli.
Here.
Councilmember Hardle.
President.
Vice Mayor Womack.
Here.
Mayor Winku.
Here. Can I get, Edward, you want to do our prayer for us tonight? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Almighty everything God, we do will always. Edward, to give you thanks and praise, and we're especially grateful for the gift of this night, this place, this time, and these wonderful people that are here. For our Holy Spirit a blessing on all. Guide, guard, direct us in what the work has been appreciated is to be done. And we will always, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edward. Alrighty, first we'll start out with anything that anybody wants to talk to the council about that's not on the agenda, feel free to come up now.
Mike Stone, sixteen three oh one Burke Street. I'm here tonight to talk to a couple issue, about a couple issues that are near and dear to me and affect me and a few others on Lakeside. In hopes that the council might take action on some of these. The first issue is the ongoing construction. If you've been anywhere near Lakeside, it's a swamp, it's a bit of a disaster at the moment. You know, it's part of construction. The businesses on Lakeside were not notified of any of the road closures that have happened. We have not been giving any sort of schedule of any further road closures. Some of these have affected some other, some of us more than others. I know especially Sweet and Sassy's been struggling a little bit and what she's been talking to me. We had hoped that when they do go to close four fifty-five there and start ripping up the rest of the road, that we are notified of that, at least, because we can plan accordingly and let our customers know and hopefully come up with some provision for access for our businesses during that time. As most of you know, it's pretty tough to have a small business in a small town, especially one that's secluded from Highway fifty, as we are. It requires a lot of advertising, both social media and, you know, other options. So, any revenue from foot traffic is pretty important to us. So, if there's anything the council can do or to look into, perhaps maybe some sort of compensation when these road closures, closures do happen, we would greatly appreciate it. Speaking on helping the small businesses. In discussions with the town manager, we, I asked him if there are any grants available, and he said they are. But according to him, he said it's not worth the time at the moment, but I would like to ask to see if the council could potentially make motion to look into that and see what options are available, because it would help us out. The landlords, the small businesses, any sort of funding would help us all out greatly. I know Cowls, they had issues with their building. The landlord didn't seem to upkeep some of that stuff and raise the rent. And I know Sweet and Sassy, her rent is just recently raised, and that's an older building as well. I myself, I live in a, well, the shop is a nineteen twenty-six Sears and Roebuck. It's got a lot of issues with that as well, so trying to stay on top of these old historic buildings is pretty tough, and we could get all, we could use all the help that we can get. Lastly, I had thrown my ring, my hat into the ring to try to run for mayor. And unfortunately, I was disqualified under grounds that my bank account did not meet all standards. The standards which, it needed to be a campaign account. What's a campaign account? Well, under Florida statute, it's any depository funds, any bank, any, any financial institution. So, I'm here to ask why I was disqualified when I had a bank that I was able to use for the campaign account. So, you don't have to come to an agreement or an answer right now. I'm not feeling so well, that's why I'm a little bit scatterbrained and shaky. So, just wanted to bring these things to the council and the attention of the town, and hope you have a good night.
Okay, wait, no, let's get somewhere. On the road, you just need them to notify you what's going on, right?
Yeah, that would be nice. And then when they do close down that section at four fifty-five, some sort of, you know, because I know they're going to rip up all that, it may take just the day, which that's fine, but if they can get the foreman on the, on when that's going to happen, that'd be really good for us, because that way we can plan accordingly. Because I've had customers almost get hit by that front end loader. I myself almost got ran over. As a matter of fact, that, the foreman's gone for the day, and there's open pits over there down in the end of Lakeside, so kids riding bicycles or vehicles at night. There's nothing besides a couple of cones keeping people from falling into those. So, there's, there's a bit of a safety hazard going on right now, at least, that I can touch on.
Can we do that, Paul, for this gentleman, make sure to have him?
Yeah, I, I've met with the foreman, and I believe I've met with you afterwards, and they're, they're just going to give them a minimum of a five-day notice before the road. They did block a part of the road that blocked his business and the Sassy Sweet Shop. I was able to, what, within thirty or forty minutes, I came out there and I think satisfactorily took care of that for you. For that day, but I, there hasn't any other road closures in front of the businesses, but we'll definitely notify them.
Yeah, and I also like to mention that Mohammed, his concrete on top of the tanks has been crushed in by the semi-trucks. And that's not necessarily a town issue, it's more or less the contractor. So, if we can make note, because he comes out screaming, I can hear him.
Okay, so we'll, we'll notify you before the roads close again. And on the grants, I'm not, I'm not real familiar with the grants for small businesses, but I do use, and have other people using the SBA. Have, have you tried that?
Yeah, we've tried a few of that. Even though we are listed as a women-owned business, it's still been pretty tough. As with most things government-wise.
Yeah, it's come, it's worked for some businesses that I'm helped, that you might keep on that one, because, but what, can we do anything with that, Paul?
Yeah, there's only really two programs I'm aware of, and I mean, there may be more out there. One, USDA has a small rural town program where they can give you a grant for some facade loans that can be like a zero interest for the businesses, where they can improve their fronts of their businesses, and that's usually what it's toward. It's a federal one. I've looked into it for a larger community, and it's very time and cost intensive for the amount of businesses we have. That's why I mentioned that probably that one wouldn't be worth the gain, the only one to know about. Then the other, the other one out there is CRA funds. If the town ever did establish a CRA, those funds could be used to improve not only the facade or the front of all the businesses, but I believe, you know, the whole downtown corridor, those funds could be used for, so that'd be something else, if you ever revisit that, that would be a possibility too.
Yeah, the facade, the facade, I can't even say it properly.
The facade, it's a weird one.
Yeah, definitely help a couple of us out. For me, I do have an older home and getting better signage, especially, you know, everybody knows, turning that left there, people don't stop, or they're not supposed to stop. Turning that left, you're not looking right. So, Sweet and Sassy, me, and then all the businesses back in the other park, being able to improve the fronts of our businesses with signage and bigger things that, you know, of course, meet the town code and beautify it, I, I feel would greatly help us out. So, especially getting business to us.
That's an idea, right, where you come, coming from Mountford Academy, you're going to do the ninety, where the grass is right there to have, you know, signs for our businesses.
Yeah, like a business park sign would be really cool.
Correct. And that might be something, we're obviously going to do some improvements at four fifty-five, starting probably about another twelve months or so. We can definitely, you know, be a good time to reexamine that whole entire corridor, what that looks like, so we'll, you know, be examining turn lanes in the area, islands in there to slow cars down, looking into a possibility of funding for a roundabout, if some funding's come through, to maybe improve that entire intersection down there, if the council wants to do that. And that would be a great place and the center of that to kind of advertise our businesses in Mountford.
You know, that's, I think it was like twelve thousand we get every year to advertise outside of Lake County for our, our day.
Events, correct.
Does Lake County have things like that? I know they have that, and we, we used it every, we still do. But I'm thinking Lake County might have some small business loans or?
I, yeah, I'd have to check, I'm not sure. We had, I mean, we have some incentives for bigger businesses, but mostly the, some of the CRAs, as Paul has, or a TIF structure, whatever you decide to do, if you did something, might, you know, there might provide some funds for that kind of a thing.
I mean, you know, anything helps, honestly. For, for me personally, I deal in firearms, so I understand the implications of a government body getting involved in advertising and all that, so I'm not too offended by it. But it sometimes is felt in the last, I've been here since twenty eighteen, or at least my business has, that kind of been ignored and just felt like outsiders to this town. So, but any, any gesture like that does mean a lot more than nothing, so.
Is, is there a way you can go on a county website and look for something?
So, are you asking about advertising or for?
Anything, any advertising, money-free operation.
I'll tell you what, you, you are both, reach out to me at my county address, and, and I'll see if there's something that the county has for it. I can't promise anything, because we're, it's more for the, probably the bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a high-wage employer kind of a thing that, we actually talked about it today at the commission a little bit, but, but we'll, we'll definitely check.
All right, don't let him get away with not following up.
Yeah, just sent, yeah, you have my county email, okay.
So, a question I have for you, why were you disqualified?
I was told that I could not prove that I had a campaign account.
Okay.
Even though the check I gave them was from a legitimate bank, illegitimate financial institution, and money would have came out of it.
Are you, can, are you able to chime in on that at all?
So, the town's code requires that, as part of the qualification, that campaign funds, a check has to be made out of a campaign account. The check that was provided and others similarly just had a name on it. It didn't say a name with a camp, with campaign fund after it. So, a request was made for anybody whose check was like that to provide proof from the lender or the bank that it wasn't actually set up as a campaign account. And the town did not receive proof from Mr. Stone from the bank showing that it was a campaign account, and that's a code requirement.
Okay, so that's the Mountford code?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, because I was just looking for clarification, because statute one oh six dot oh two one, and then paragraph B just says any, any financial institution, any account. So.
The town's code distinguishes between personal accounts, campaign accounts, and under your code, it has to be a campaign account.
Did you get the information? I almost made the same mistake, that's, that's why I'm asking.
I didn't get it until I actually showed up. I had most of the qualification stuff on hand, just, just from researching it, but nobody ever actively reached out. And I understand that is my priority to reach out first, but even at the caucus, I received no communications.
You, you should have?
Nobody, nobody reached out to me until I showed up Friday at eleven forty. I was, I hurt my back that week, so I hadn't, hadn't, didn't get to get in until like twenty minutes before the deadline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Anybody else want to talk to council?
Farmer, farmer banks, Hellfrick, Clay Road District, South Lake County, farm tip of the day. There are two growing seasons in Florida. One is the warm weather months of spring and summer, and the other is the cool weather months, which is fall and winter. And in Florida, you can grow crops year-round. We're actually going into a new crop season, where you can grow a lot of stuff. And I'll talk about that next month. Mayor, council, distinguished guests, what gets you up in the morning? As children, as kids, we get up for adventure and play. For me, it was Saturday morning cartoons. As we grow older, it's education, it's going to school, it's having a community, learning. As we get even older than that, it is actually a profession of raising children, having a family. And then, when you get to my age, it is service. And a lot of you are here because you are serving the community. And there are seven ups to service. The first one is to wake up. The most difficult one, actually, is to wake up, metaphorically speaking, and also realistically speaking. The next is to dress up. The third one is actually the second most difficult up of, of them all, and that is to actually show up for your constituents, for your citizens. The next is to listen up, speak up, and follow up. And lastly, it is to never, ever give up on your community. And we do this service because, not because we care, no, it's more because others matter. So, as we go forward, remember, wake up, dress up, show up, listen up, speak up, follow up, and never, ever give up. I am Farmer Banks Hellfrick, may you all be blessed. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. That was great. Alright, anybody else like to talk to council?
Dan Davis, sixteen eight forty-nine Lake Street. I'm the town volunteer. I go out on little patrols, looking for nothing in particular. About two weeks ago, I went into a community, a new, fairly new community, and saw a man that had a very nice yard, and I stopped and I told him. Well, he informed me that he and other members of his community thought that I was there for code enforcement, which can't be further from the truth. I'm there for safety reasons and for security reasons. Well, he, he talked a lot for about an hour. And he told me that his community had been given the impression that the town council here wanted to be an HOA and wanted to control everything about his community and his, his home and his yard. And I'm thinking to myself, that can be, it can't be further from the truth. I don't know where he got his information from, but he was dead wrong. They've got enough to do without that. He talked about having a certain percentage of his yard in grass. So, we're going to have somebody from the town council go out and measure his yard, figure out what percentage he's got in grass, and we're going to fine him five hundred dollars for not having, for having too much grass, baloney. This town council here and the town management has been above board in everything for the past fifteen or so years, has been clear on everything they've done, and they were very above board on everything they've done. They've made a mistake. They were the first ones to admit they made a mistake when that happened. As far as I know, that's the only mistake they've made, and that had to do with sewer systems. I would like for the town to send out something in a water bill or the town letter or something, explaining what I do. And explaining that it has nothing to do with code enforcement. Or you Nazi on the Mountford HOA. That's about it. I was just very disappointed to find out, and he said that his whole community believed the way he did. And that was very disappointing and a little upsetting for me. Enough to make me get up here and talk. That's it, any, any questions about it?
No, I'll put it in, I'll put it in our, our monthly article in our newsletter, which you do. And I'll give them your phone number and your address.
We're supposed to have another person helping me out pretty soon. Do we know who that person is?
No, I don't.
Nobody knows who he is, I hope he shows up.
Well, Terry's getting healing up, right?
Yeah, Terry will be back pretty soon, yeah. Okay, well, thank you for listening to my, to me wine.
Dan, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Just to clear the air on code enforcement, can you briefly give us a synopsis of exactly how that process works?
Sure, particularly the subdivision, obviously, like, we all know what he's talking about. I think we sent one courtesy letter out to a resident that I recall, and that was after all the trees were removed. All, we have done code enforcement in that subdivision, and it's all been against the developer for usually water theft and erosion control issues. Everybody remembers the landslide coming down the hills there during development. So, with that said, unless it's a life, safety, health issue like a violation that involves building code, generally, most of the time, we send a courtesy letter out to the resident, give them fifteen days, hey, let you know you got a violation, it's like, please correct it so nothing further happens. If nothing happens after that fifteen days, it's reinspected sometime after that fifteen days, which sometimes could be anywhere from fifteen days to longer for, I get out there to do a reinspection. Then they get a notice of enforcement, and that notice of enforcement says you have now fifteen more days to comply, this is actually a letter where you got a violation, and you have fifteen days to comply with that. If they don't, and other reinspection's done, then the next step is they get a fifteen-day notice to come to a special magistrate hearing, which we generally have every other month. We just recently had one, and I know there were some of the council members there, some members of the public just came to watch.
The point of the special magistrate?
Is to bring into compliance what the code violation is, and it, and it depends on what it is. So, like, you know, for instance, there was a couple that had tall grass, and so they've had the courtesy letter, they had notice enforcement, then they had the hearing. For most of those, it was anywhere from sixty to ninety-plus days have passed without action. And even when we come in, you know, as I ask the magistrate, generally, I say our goal is voluntary compliance. We would ask that, if, for instance, for grass, if they don't come in compliance, within seven days, we would recommend the twenty-five dollar fine, so we give them one more chance to come into that. Then after that, then a fine will accumulate, which will turn into a lien on the property until it's corrected, until the fine's paid, until there's compliance.
And if, if somebody wanted to know who, who filed the complaint that started the whole process, can you go to the Public Records Ask Act and ask for the name of the person who filed that complaint?
So, I'm not.
Your friend, your neighbor, whoever it is.
I'm not allowed to act on anonymous complaints. I can self-initiate stuff, which usually with, when it comes to building code, that's usually where I self-initiate, unless it's just something that's a repeat thing. Then, you know, like, I've seen this grass a thousand times, and I'll go ahead and initiate that, but generally, my stuff is usually life, health, safety stuff. And yeah, in order for me to act, if, if someone comes up to me and say they need to go mow their yard, I tell them every time, and councils come to me, same thing, I tell them, you got to go fill out the form, go online, go fill out a co-complaint, or I won't act on it. And that's Florida statute. The process is very bogged down in Florida. It, it's, it gives everybody ample and a lot of time to come into compliance with things. And generally, most people do. I mean, our, our goal, again, is we, we, we don't want to be heavy-handed, we want people to come in compliance. There's times when we have to be, and, you know, where things don't comply, especially with the life, safety and health things. Anything else Anita that adds to that?
So, the vast majority of times, the complaint is issued with your neighbor or from your neighbor or some other resident in the community. It does not come from the security guys riding around, the town patrol, it does not come from council?
No, I, I don't ever remember the security person turning in a code enforcement complaint. I have itself initiated some, Public Works has, like, when Public Works, they come tell me something, I say, go fill out a complaint if it's something they need to see, that's redundant, and again, unless it's life, health and safety issues.
Well, maybe it's the people that are telling you that the town is doing that, that are actually calling on you. You ever consider that possibility, I wonder? But the information's out there, if you want to know who's got code enforcement against you, you can go get it, and it won't be the town.
And you know, again, you know, we, the goal is, we want to work to bring people into compliance. If, you know, if there's an issue gets to that, just if everybody knows when your yard gets more than twelve or eighteen inches tight, mow your grass, you know, it's just, it's, it's usually the same properties we have issues with that end up with fines.
Paul, I have a question for you. About four months ago, we had discussed the life. of a code complaint, and you were working on putting that on the website, and I think including it into the notices. How are we making out with that?
Um, I really haven't done any additional. We just got our special magistrate back, and so, but, no, thank you. I honestly just have probably dropped the ball on that, so I'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. Because I think that'll help as well. I mean, that, you explained it perfectly there, but most likely, anyone that's gonna get it, hopefully, won't remember what you just said.
True, yes. And our, um, our Mooney Code does lay it out pretty, the process, pretty clearly. And generally, we don't have, the only things we really have set fines for in the fan, uh, town is cutting trees down. Everything else is really up to the special magistrate.
So, you're saying Public Works does not write code complaints?
No, I, I said they have in the past. Not a lot, but if they just see something that's a continual problem or an issue, usually what theirs would be, someone took a tree and dumped a pile on the edge of the roadway, and it's, you know, causing issues or traffic and those kind of things, they do. They generally don't, you know, do anything unless it's that, or I ask them to go out and take a look at something for me if I'm too busy.
Thanks.
All righty, anybody else?
Paul, can you open a complaint, or, uh, code enforcement, enforcement for, um, for someone taking down a tree without a complaint? Is that considered life, health, and safety?
No, that, that, well, I could self-initiate it if I saw it.
Okay.
Or if I recognized it. But yeah, if someone comes, says, I, there's a tree down, then no. Then, you know, I won't go out and go look at it to see if they taken the tree down. But, you know, generally, a small town, I'm usually driving around trying to, if there's a tree comes down, it's, it's, I see it pretty quickly-
Right.
-in the area. A lot of, sometimes it's in the right of way, too. That's usually when we run into some issues.
And so, if the tree comes down in the sto- in, like, during a storm, how does that work? Do they still need a permit to remove it?
There's some statutes that evolve around hurricane stuff where-
Not just hurricane, it's a storm.
Yeah. During a normal storm. Um, well, if it came down during the storm, then no, yeah, they, they can't just, if it's falling down, they can cut it, but they just can't say it's, it's, it's a storm, there's a branch out, I can cut the tree down.
Right.
So, um, there, there's really, Florida does have two statutes when it comes to trees. One, you can go through our normal process or land development code. You apply for an application to cut a tree down. That goes to Lisa and Sean Parks. They'll ask you for a tree inventory to make sure you have the minimum amount of trees, and they'll give you that permit. The, the other avenue in Florida is the legislators. So, three years ago, Anita, I think about three years ago, if you have an arborist, who's a licensed arborist with a number, they can come out, and if there's a safety issue, such as it's too close to the house, it may fall on the house, there's a rot on it or anything like that, they can send an email to Patty at the permny office and say, this tree's dangerous or whatever, we're gonna cut it down, and you don't need a permit from the town. You can do that under state statute.
Matthew Baumann. Matthew Baumann, eleven twenty-two, Imperial Legal Street, Groveland, Florida. I just want to say, I did attend the last code meeting, and I think the new magistrate is very professional and considerate. I thought he did a really good job with the meeting. But, my main question is regarding the previous conversation regarding the CRA, is that something the city's still pursuing? Is that on hold? Reason I ask is, the way it kind of works is you kind of want it in place before a lot of development happens to help fund it long-term. So, I was just curious, is that something we're still working on? Or not?
We never, haven't talked about it since. Probably need to.
Is that something the council wants to talk about?
Well, we'll see what happens after the election, and then ask that council. It might be, instead of doing with this one. You know, it might be different people here.
Isn't the clock running out on that? The, the, yeah, I think the, the clock that is running out on that with the state, isn't it?
Without, no.
No?
Do you mean about future legislation?
Yeah, the legislation didn't pass.
Yeah, right.
That's just my question.
Were you looking for something in particular with that CRA money?
No, you got the right idea.
He had a question for you.
You, you got the right idea. As far as looking at it. Go ahead.
Was there something in the CRA that you're looking for in particular?
I sit on the CRA board in Groveland, and we've, it's taken a long time. They've finally built up enough funds to do a lot of large projects, and if that's something the town is interested in, the sooner you start, the better. Especially with, from what I saw with the previous potential CRA districts, there is some large development that is planned in those areas, and since it's based on the difference of the value of the property from when you start to when it grows, that's how it gets its funding. And it'll pull in funding for more than just the town's taxes, it pulls it from the county as well. So, you'll get more funding in town than you might otherwise have gotten on the same tax value. So, it's a long-term strategy, and if you never start, you never get there. So, I'm just, just suggesting it.
Have you, have you noticed a positive or negative aspect of it in Groveland?
In Groland? Yeah, they did a lot of facade grants downtown. They basically redid the whole downtown and fixed up a lot of the old buildings. They built a community center for empowerment.
Did it help businesses? Did it help the businesses?
I don't have a lot of the personal business information to see if it helped them. It improved, improved the look of downtown considerably.
That should help the business.
Yeah. It attracts attention. They, they have done some grants where they've helped businesses remodel. So, there was a, like, a shared office space that we've done recently to help provide services that the town doesn't typically have, which is a lot of office space. It's mostly, it's got a lot of industrial and some retail, but not a lot of office. And then they've done, I've heard that's done fairly well. It's got like a shared conference room. Rehab an old warehouse building to put it in. So, there are benefits. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else want to talk to council? You didn't bring the family again.
I know, I know. Kids are in bed. Or they should be, at least. So, I'm Christian, one seven seven oh one, Eighth Street. So, first off, I'd just like to start and say thank you to all of you and to the volunteers who make this community a safe and livable place for, for everyone, and families included. Uh, the reason, can you guys hear me? Yeah, there you go. Also, I'm a little concerned because the guy was sick, and I don't want to, I don't know. Anyway, um, so today, I come to the council with some questions over two somewhat related concerns, and then I just have a few comments. Hopefully, I won't take up too much of the time today. But, uh, before I ask my questions, I feel like I, I need to add some context to help understand where the questions and the concerns are coming from. So, the first concern dates back to twenty twenty-three, when the town shared plans for the new development, uh, you know, the development of the library, the sports court, and the sewage system. And the sewage development seemed to be, seemed to capture the attention of many of the residents, mainly because it would have affected many of the residents. Uh, so, me in particular, I've had some interest, well, great interest in the, uh, the sewage system, and I was determined to follow the town's decision process. So, I started following, attending the meetings, and learning more about what the town council wanted to do. Uh, but at some point, it felt like the communication on the subject just stopped. And many months later, um, I learned from another resident that a meeting was held and a vote, um, had shut down the, the plan for the, uh, the development. So, I, I was disappointed because I was in support of it, but I was more perplexed as to why I missed the meeting in the first place. Um, I felt like I wanted to attend. I at least wanted to share my opinion on the, uh, on the subject. But it wasn't till a few months ago that I, that I really started to think and look into why I missed the meeting. And so, this meeting was for Resolution twenty twenty-four one forty-three and Resolution twenty twenty-four one forty-four, and it struck me that the meeting was held on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Uh, this date was only a couple weeks after Hurricane Milton, uh, which was on October fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Now, I don't know what kind of damage any of you may have sustained, uh, but I know that neighbors of mine, uh, it took them months to, to repair, uh, some of the damage to their, their home. So, it seems that I was more preoccupied with the damage that I sustained, and other residents may have been, too. Um, so, a sewage system at that time was less important than repairing damage, um, that had a more immediate risk to health, safety, and wellness. So, if that is the case, then the town council meeting on sewage system, uh, probably heard from a small subset of residents, uh, views and opinions. Now, I'm not so sure how much our views and opinions go into it. I, I know you guys do listen, um, but sometimes it seems like you guys do have a, I'll say, an agenda, or you've already kind of decided in your mind what, what will, what will occur, or what your vote will be. So, anyways, my first question, uh, would the town council consider establishing a policy that offers a grace period with clear communication of the town actions on decisions important to residents after natural disasters? Now, I'm not looking for an answer right now. It's just maybe something that could be considered. Maybe you have considered it, I just haven't heard about it. Um, now, my second concern, uh, involves the quick decision in November twenty twenty-four to use the DWTS and its implication on future developments, such as the proposed residential development for the Osgood property. So, every time the concern of DWTS is raised, um, since I've heard of it, the town council references the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, DEP. And so, when I repeatedly hear DEP from the town council, I interpret the reference as the town not having its own code or policies on DWTS and relying on state and federal regulations. Now, it, it's fine if the town and its residents want basic health and safety, but with regards to sanitation, I personally would like to see the town of Montverde set an example for its neighbors, neighboring cities, and the rest of Florida. So, I'm just curious, what, what is the highest priority for the town at this moment? If there's an answer, I'd like one, but if not, that's fine.
Hmm. I guess it would, might be how we each feel.
How you feel, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, um, my highest priority, really don't have one at the moment.
Christian, that'd be great for a, a council retreat to discuss those exact issues on what is important to all of us.
Sorry, I didn't catch the first one.
A retreat for council to go on to discuss what's important.
Yeah, he wants us to go to Italy for two months.
Oh, yeah, okay, that'd be nice, yeah.
And Chris, real, real quick on your two things, just, just real quick for context. On the sewer decision in October, um, one of the four million grants, DEP, because the process for the decision-making has taken so long, DEP said, we need an answer now because we're pulling the money back. So, that, that was one of the reasons why, hurricane or not, the council, I, I had to get a decision from council on that, so we can inform DEP. Then, the other thing that was running, um, was also the ARPA funds that we had the five million from the county. They, they needed action on that of what the plan was for that money. So, we were just, we were kind of at a timeline crunch where if, if, if the council had to make the decision, the decision would have been made anyway. So, I, you know, it was good for them. They came out, they talked about it, they worked it out, they got comments from the public, and they made a decision which had to be done. So, um, I, I think that was their responsibility to do that. As far as the sewer systems and the onsite, um, that you discussed, um, when we refer to DEP regulations, and I'll let, and our town attorney correct me, but the town cannot make statutes that trump the state statutes, and the Florida statutes have given clear authority to Department of Environmental Protection when it comes to regulating septic systems and sewer systems. So, the town's codes cannot trump what the state statutes are. So, that's why we refer to DEP, because they're the regulating authority, not the town when it comes to those type of systems.
Okay, so, the town can't have, uh, greater standards than the DEP, is that what you're saying?
I believe that is correct, right? And, yes, except.
Yes. Um, in some instances, towns can adopt stricter code than what the state statute is, as long as it's not in conflict. I don't think that's the case with, um, DEP regulations. I think only DEP, um, has the authority to adopt regulations relating to septic and sewer.
Okay, okay. Um, okay. So, I, I will share. I'll, I'll continue to share. Just the, the final comments that I have. Um, so, with respect to the development of the Osgood property, and I, I would hope that others may be listening to this, maybe the DEP, I doubt it, uh, but I'd like to comment that, that more houses may bring in more people, uh, but, and in the short term, provide more activity for local businesses, as we've heard a lot of discussion about the, the local businesses here. Um, a lot of activity for the businesses and the town spaces, um, community establishments. However, I worry that over time, the wastewater systems currently in place will begin to fail, if not already failing, resulting in a long-term increase in prices, a decline in the customers, more lost businesses, and a decline, decline in taxes for Montverde. And I would additionally just comment on the scientific literature on DWTS, um, a literature review that I found. And some of the conclusions, I'd just like to make these comments about the conclusions from this study or this literature review. So, one significant challenge is the need for skilled personnel and community involvement to operate the systems. Um, the need for skilled personnel arises from the need for the system to have more frequent operation and maintenance, hoping that Montverde will have that when these systems are put in place. Specifically, the study looked at many wastewater treatment facilities, which I think is what, uh, has been promoted here, uh, in, in the town of Montverde. They found that the advantages were that, yes, it does avoid high investment needed for pipeline construction, it can treat both black and gray water. Disadvantages, though, uh, requires regular maintenance, as I mentioned, desludgeing and inspection to maintain performance, and that research is still needed to, uh, study areas such as the pollutant load. And I'd like to emphasize that these statements are from a scientific literature view and not from the testimonies of residents and isolated professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work you put into that and bring it to us. Anybody else got something? It's not on the agenda. All righty, we're gonna have to move on to the agenda. Uh, let's start with our town manager's report. If you want to, you wanted to go through the grants, right?
Yeah. Would help. Correct, Mayor. Um, I handed you a little paper, and I would like to spend my town manager report time just kind of briefly covering over that and going, um, through this a little bit. Um, I, I really want to spend a little bit of time just for council's knowledge and also public knowledge. When we get these grants, um, understanding some of the backdrop and the work that goes into them, because ninety percent of the stuff we do with grants, I don't think anybody ever sees it. We go out there, we see the work on the road and see what happens. So, you know, currently, Montverde, we have twelve active grants moving and approximately forty-seven million dollars' worth of money. Um, and I want to outline some of the responsibilities that the town has with these grants. Um, and just so you know, the people involved on the town staff, it's, it's obviously myself, our town attorney, our town clerk, Sandy, who's doing the grant coordination for that, Public Works with locates and things along that line. So, I just kind of want to walk you through a little bit of the, the cycle of that. Um, the first, when we get a new grant, this is after we've done the application, after we've done everything, uh, we go into the grant agreement stage. So, in this particular stage, um, myself and the clerk and attorney, we spend a lot of time reviewing the grant agreements. These usually first come down from the granting agencies such as DEP. Um, we have to put, um, some information in those, such about the timing, kind of the scope, the terms and agreement, um, how the payments are gonna be, but basically outlines the conditions of the grant. So, there's a lot of backwork that goes in, and that's eventually what comes before the council as a resolution for you to approve that grant agreement. But there, most of the time, we're probably forty-five to sixty days of back and forth, Scott, would that probably be fair to say on a grant agreement, um, that we work, plus the time for the town attorney to, um, to do her review. And a lot of times, they'll ask for an attorney letter, um, with our finances, that stuff along that line that has to be done. Um, next, we kind of jump into the project, um, plan approval stage. Um, this is the planning stage. So, this is kind of where we're at with those two Shafi grants. So, this is where we actually have to do a little bit of, um, design work. We have spent a lot of time saying, what does this look like? What can we do with the money? We gotta come up with project cost estimates. Um, environmental reviews are done, um, the facility plans, and a lot of time, this is the stage where I kind of show you those hypothetical sketches, you know, as the council. So, there's been a lot of back and forth, a lot of meetings. I've been up in Tampa sometimes, meet with engineers. Engineering teams have come down here. We go through that to see what we can do those funds for. So, a lot of coordination, and each of these planned documents, each agency requires some form of that planning document, and sometimes they all want different stuff. So, for instance, the project that we're gonna do on Highway four fifty-five to improve that roadway, um, there's three different agencies who all want something different involved in it. As of date, maybe more coming. Um, then we kind of jump into that design phase, and that design phase, this is where we're doing the engineering plan. So, we're doing kickoff meetings, um, we're reaching out to, um, different agencies such as St. John's to pull permits, um, we're putting those engineering plans. So, depending on the scope of the project, this is usually a three months to, up to a nine-month cycle of, um, putting this design together, because these are getting to the point of full engineering drawing. So, you could kind of- So you could kind of see that, I'm not going to read everything on the list, that's why I typed it for you guys and have it on the screen up there. So a lot of intense involvement, a lot of time just meeting and going through things of what each things would look like. For instance, you know, we have the twelve million nine for the water system. We have spent a lot of time, where are the lines that need to be rebuilt? We've had to sit down with our Public Works and look where the lines are currently in the ground, what's showing there that's not there, what lines need to be improved. They have to do some modeling to see what size they need to be, then we kind of have this whole back and forth. You know, we have discussion, where does the water tower go, those kind of things. So I have to sometimes come to council, come back and forth, and we have those discussions. Then you kind of get in, each grant wants something different in this plan approval process. I recently told you, we just were able to get appropriations for three hundred fifty thousand dollars to do sidewalk and crosswalk improvements in front of the Montverde Academy School. And FDOT, this is what they expect to see through this design approval process, so when our plans get sixty percent, they want to submit it, they want to comment on it to make sure it's meeting the grant agreement. Then they want to, they want to see them at the ninety percent, they want to see them at the hundred percent with cost estimates, the bid documents, they want to review everything we're doing and comment. So every time they review, comment, we have to come back to attorney, come back to the engineer, come back to our clerk, come back to me. Then they want to see the final documents and bid. So that's just to get to the point of bidding. And so each agency's different, but there's a lot of work back and forth. And then we finally get to the bidding and procurement stage. So we are getting ready to put out a bid for Porter Avenue from Fourth Street to First Street and part of First Street. That's part of the one point eight million resilient storm project that we have that we're doing, and that's going to go out to bid next week. And that document is four hundred pages long, so that has to be first put together by our engineering team. It's reviewed by our town attorney, it's reviewed by me. We have back and forth meetings to make sure we have the right specs and the documents, the right timing, the bid dates that work for our town staff for openings and closings. Then it passes on to the clerk, they have to post it, we have to advertise it, we have to accept bids, do the bid openings, then we have to do the reference check, which our engineers do, then the selection process comes back to council for approval. And so on, so on. So again, the coordination, a lot of time, you know, a lot of work on the background. Then really, then the construction phase. You know, this is kind of what's most visible, what you see, what the public sees, but on the background of that construction phase, there's a lot going on from the different change orders that may come, from, for instance, three weeks ago, DEP came out and did a site inspection audit, where they walked the project, make sure it was complying with the plans, make sure it's complying with the agreement. So, you know, myself and our engineers and Chuck, we were out there for half a day walking the sites with them, you know. So that's an example, and they want to come back out and do it at least two more times on that particular project. This is also very intensive on back of the house on our finance department. In the last twelve months, just checks related to capital projects, we've had a five hundred and fifty-five additional AP checks written. So when you think about the AP check process, we reviewed that not very long ago, where, you know, there's a process we go through where it has to be coded, has to be put in, has to be reviewed by me. In this case, the engineers have to review it. The checks are written, they have to obviously come for council on the reports, reports have to be done. But on top of that, we have to collect the return checks, we have to collect the payments, we have to collect all the information from the particular vendors, then we have to collate all that stuff and send it up to the grant agency for reimbursement, then track that process and respond back to their questions. So a lot of back-to-house stuff going on back there as well. Then, that kind of gets in that grant administration phase. So throughout that, while we're doing that the entire time, there's different requirements within the grant that we have to fulfill, making sure that all the design and plans and the construction process are meeting the grant agreements. The project we have going on Lakeside, for instance, you know, it's a Davis Bacon because it's federal funds in it. So Woodrow Kearns have to come out, have to do the Davis Bacon interviews, we've had to do the wage salary interviews, things along that line. Obviously, whenever there's construction, there's complaints, there's issues, we have to respond to those. You know, there was one mentioned tonight, which, you know, I mentioned I went out and responded, and I think I resolved it with the closing of the roads. So we have those things that pop up through the whole construction process as you go through it as well. So I just wanted to, I kind of gave you that detailed outline more in depth than what I just covered, but you do hear manager, manager saying a lot, "We are really tied up and, you know, really trying to focus on the priority of the grants," but I never really explained what that is. So I just want, that's a brief overview. I welcome any of the council member wants us to come and go a little more in depth in that. I welcome that conversation with you guys, because I want you to know what's going on in the back of the house, and it's just not me, it involves really our entire staff. Lakeside, for instance, the amount of locates, we have to locate every single water line up and down there, dig them, find the depth, get those marked and locate it. There was two water breaks during there because of stuff we didn't even have on the maps where lines were, where they weren't supposed to be, an old line was there. We had to relocate two or three lines. So the first couple of weeks they started out there, Public Works was literally out there for the first two weeks, just dealing, two guys out there just dealing, trying to get that ready for them to go. So I'd be glad to answer any question on that. Before I go, I'm going to go over all the grants we have and just give you a status update, but any questions on that for a hit it? Capital project update.
What's the date of our meeting in October? Eleven?
Real quick, alright. Getting a date for you real quick.
October fourteenth.
Okay, so on our council meeting, October fourteenth, I'm pretty sure, I'm going to go ahead and get the flyer together, but we are going to do our ribbon cutting and have our meal outside by the library, invite the whole public in, we're going to open the library up. And whether we're a hundred percent done or not, we're going to go ahead and get you guys in there and get you to enjoy your new beautiful building. So it's on the way, so October fourteenth, come here. Yes, thank you, please, it's just a beautiful thing over there, it's a gorgeous building. So look for that, we'll probably do that at five o'clock, start our meal a little bit early and get that going. Progress is going good, we're really down to, we actually did our punch list with the building inspector today, or set up kind of the initial punch list to go. So we're going to try to get that CEO by the end of the month for the certificate occupancy. We're still finishing up the cabinets and the bookshelves, and we still have a little bit of low voltage stuff to finish up in there. The library emergency generator, Woodrow Kearns got the plans at, I think they're at ninety percent now, if I recall right, they sent me over those plans, so those are ready to go to bid for the emergency generator. That's going to, we're going to be able to get that funded with our SHAFI grant at a hundred percent. So that's ready to go in there. The outdoor bathroom in Park, we should have a permit this week for the septic system. John, our wonderful building manager, has just about got that wrapped up, and so we'll hopefully be able to put that septic in for the last three weeks in the bathrooms outside of partitions, we'll be ready to go on the outdoor bathrooms. The butterfly garden, we still have a few little things to finish up out there, but it's mainly done out there, so I'll move that to the bottom of the list. Community building, we had a discussion about that, nothing new going on over there. Fire station in Lake County, so they have a masquerading permit that the town has issued for them. So I would expect the next two weeks, you'll see the dirt moving out there. I believe all the turtles now have been removed, and so you'll start seeing dirt move on there, and they're finishing up everything for the rest of their building permit. So I think we're, I think we're down to the payment, they are just processing the payment now for the building permit fee. So that's exciting to see them get going on that building, it's going to be a beautiful building for the town for a new fire station. Kirk Park Playground, the vision committee's going to come back and revisit it with you guys, probably in December to talk about that. Bridgewood Avenue, we've, are ninety-nine percent done with the sidewalks out there and the ADA ramps. The signs were a little bit delayed, came in for the crosswalk signs that go on Bridgewood, so I have them in now, they came in, and so I'm just going to wait on the contractor, he's probably about two weeks out to being able to get those crosswalk signs up, and that should be done. Lake Avenue Storm Project, they're continuing to make progress, they almost got most of the curb in down there, they got some, a couple of radiuses to do. If you've been down there, they've been starting to tear up the asphalt and put the gravel in there. I don't have an exact finish date, but I would, I would expect to see it done in the next four or five weeks. Have you heard anything new from your team on that, Scott?
I'm sorry.
On Bridgewood, on the Lakeside, I'm sorry? On Lakeside, have you heard anything new from the contractors?
No.
Okay, okay. I mentioned the Porter and First Avenue, Anita and I spent some time with our engineers going over that, the bid documents, they're putting the final dates in there. That will go out the bid the week after next, and we've got about a four-week bid period where that'll go out, and so I anticipate having that at the December council meeting for contractor approval for the Porter and First Street. Boat Ramp and Storm Project, we're going to not do anything on that until they finish up the tower over at the Ferndale. I think that now has a new contract ready to go. Treskett Park, we've had a little bit of activity out there. The engineers have a design for the underground stormwater and how that would look out there, and so I will have that at the next, actually, I'm going to do that at the council meeting on the twenty-fourth, because I need to get an answer back to them, so we'll go over that when we have the final budget hearing on the twenty-fourth to look at that. 455 Storm and Street Project, so Woodrow Kearns just about has the facility plan ready to submit to DEP, EPA for their review, so we're waiting on that. We, also, we've been working with FDOT on the three hundred fifty thousand dollar appropriation for that project, and they're putting together a facility plan or a grant agreement, which will probably, I guess will probably be November, December, will come for council for that approval on that one. That's the one that had all those little criteria they wanted with the plans that I showed you on there. So we're working with that one, and I have met with the county and the county manager to talk about the use of impact fees to help fund that. So just, just so if you, if you haven't followed up with that, just let everybody know, that project is a grant project of nineteen million dollars, a hundred percent funded. In addition, we were able to secure another three hundred fifty thousand dollars in an appropriation on top of that, and possible about another quarter million dollars in impact fees. We're working with the county, not committed yet, but working in our direction that way. And this will, this project will go from the roundabout all the way up to Longridge in that area. It'll be a stormwater project that will involve curb, gutter, sidewalk, new pavement throughout the entire street on 455 and Bridgewood. The portion of it with the county will involve possible some turn lanes around the academy area that will help improve traffic flow in that area, like from people coming to academy lane to make left turns, extending the right lanes around there. In addition, enhanced crosswalks that are brighter, safer, maybe some type of elevated crosswalk a little bit to help slow the cars down in the area. Then also, we're going to incorporate some center lanes in there that may weave in and out to slow the cars down in the area. That will be, actually act as our stormwater collectors, is how we're working through that. So they're working through that facility plan, that's just a big overview, so a very exciting project for the town, and it'll also involve some enhanced landscaping when we're done, probably involve some additional lighting, things along that line. Eighth, Ninth, Temple Street Sidewalk and Storm, we're actually part of those funds, we're going to be able to include that storm project in there, then later on, actually, I'll have a picture, kind of hypothetical, what that would look like on Eighth, Ninth, and Neo where we have the big problem with the washouts. So that would include some of that as well, and also include Highland and Lake Street as well in part of that storm project. The elevated water storage tank, again, that's ready to bid, we're waiting for DEP to give us the go-ahead on our facility plan, and it's in their court, the mascot got their answer last week, I think, so we know we're close, because ours went in right after mascots, so we should be coming up hopefully soon. The Floridian, the redundant well, again, that's ready to bid, we're just waiting for facility plan, same with the lower Floridian. The consumptive use permit, we're getting close to wrapping that up and doing the final submittal over to DEP, probably two months, you think, Scott? Within about two months? Then everything, I think we're going to be in pretty good shape. It has taken us more time to do this CUP, because we're trying, they've been giving a lot of ten-year permits out, they still give twenty, we're trying for a twenty, because it's very expensive to do, and that way the town has, knows what its water is, it has availability to pump for the next twenty years. So that's a good thing for the town. The water line and upsizing loops, Woodrow and Kearns engineers are continuing to work on that, they have already done some of the line upsizing, such down Bridgewood Avenue. They're working on a line that connects Porter and Lakeside right now, and they're also looking at a design to connect Fosgate to the neighborhoods that border back up to Fosgate, because we have some dead-end lines up that direction as well. That looks like all I have on my grant reports, I'd be glad to answer any questions if council has any. Yes, sir, Mr. Hurdle?
That's it, thank you very much.
Hey, Paul, a quick question for you. Nineteen eighteen seventeen, going back up, I'm assuming that consumptive use permit has a lot to do with the redundant upper well and lower well, correct, going forward? Have they said anything, St. John's, about that?
Yeah, so that's one of the big hangups, is they want us to identify an alternative water supply, whether that's for irrigation, whether that's lower Floridian aquifer, or supplementing our potable with LFA, or pulling, you know, water out of the lake. And we're ninety-nine point nine percent sure we're going to get approval through this facility plan for that LFA well. Once we get that through the facility plan, Anita has prepared a resolution that comes from council, and the council then would authorize that LFA well as the redundant source to meet the conditions of the CUP. We'll be able to turn that in, and we're good to go on that permit.
Alrighty, any more questions?
How hard would it be to add a survey to our website, or maybe send a survey to residents?
A survey of what, I guess?
How we're doing, what they may like for us to work on? Sorry, I'm sick, everybody, that's why I'm coughing. Like, it's just a survey to ask, again, how we're doing and what we're, unrelated to those, obviously.
Yeah, I forget, you know, those, whatever the mucky ones call that's easy to do.
Right, yeah, right, a mucky survey.
I know that's an easy one to do, I mean, we could definitely look at that and talk about the council, if there's, you know, really be up to council to see what kind of information they would like to get and information, so, yeah.
I was wondering about how hard it would be, or how difficult it would be on, you know, time-wise and stuff like that, for something before we discuss, just curious.
Yeah, I mean, I could definitely look, and it might be one of those things, if you truly want some type of comprehensive survey, it'd probably be good to just contract it out with someone that can do it for the town, because, yeah, I mean, we're, you know, I keep saying, I'm trying to focus on the things that are important, the money over the next, you know, twelve months, and not saying that's not important, it's very important, because I know you guys have been out talking in the community, working, I've, you know, been trying to talk and listen to the community, but if that's something else that would help get people more information, that probably contracting out might be a better way to go.
See, I'm just curious if there's things that we might be missing, or maybe that, how we're doing, to be honest, as well. That's all. Alright, thank you.
Alrighty, let's go and move on to, how about our town attorney, do you have anything for us?
I do, just one item. Senate Bill 180 was the legislation that was passed that precludes local governments from adopting more burdensome regulations if you are within an area that's been declared an emergency, state of emergency for hurricane or other disasters. We are still currently in one from the hurricanes last year. So there is litigation that is being filed this month by at least ten local governments in the state to challenge the constitutionality of that. Lake County joined in, and so they have, the attorneys have solicited other local government attorneys to see if any of our cities or towns would like to join in the litigation as a named defendant. I think Lake County budgeted, you didn't? Okay, I thought you had, I apologize.
We didn't join that, I was going to talk about that in my report, but I'll wait and tell you, unless you want me to tell you now what we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, I asked that it be put in our legislative agenda, and the commission went forward, and we did do that, so it's actually the top item in our legislative agenda to reform that, repeal it, do something different with it at least. I met with all the legislators, our local delegation, they all tell me that changes are coming to it.
Good.
So, but we have not decided to do the lawsuit, that there are other, but you're right, there's a...
Yeah, there's two counties that have joined and ten cities, this was as of September the third. So I'm just bringing it to you to see if that's something you're interested in joining, there would be attorney's fees that would need to be contributed towards that, or they have sufficient, they needed ten to participate and join as a class, they've met that legal requirement, so the litigation is moving forward. And so you'll benefit regardless of whether you join as a party defendant, or party plaintiff, I'm sorry, but just wanted to bring that forward. If you're interested, let me know, and we'll bring a resolution forward. And that's all I have.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Town planner?
Thank you, just a brief report. We have quite a few zoning clearances, it's staying steady, so we're processing those on a regular basis, and we're working on some code changes coming up, so possibly next month. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. County... Thank you. County commissioner?
All right. Council members and residents, the public lands acquisition committee, as a result of the referendum that was passed last year by 80% of the voters, has been seated. The committee's been seated. The first meeting will be in October. It'll be an introductory meeting. I'm not sure when applications for land acquisition. And there's some confusion over that, about when that will occur. But there'll be an announcement into when submittals will be open for land acquisition, potential properties throughout the county. And then they will start going through the process of what is the criteria used to evaluate those? Because it's got to be very objective and in alignment with our countywide conservation strategy. And there'll be a process, in other words, for that. So finally, it's here. That's the big news. The committee's been seated, finally. And I'll give you an update after the first meeting coming up here in October, November. We are working on our comp plan, as you know, a complete changing of the comp plan. We had our first round of, of meetings, as people were aware. We'll do another round of those meetings coming up again later, actually, I'm sorry, early in 2026. There'll be a concerted effort on the county to reach the, sort of the Gen Z'ers, if you will, the, the young, we learned from the survey that we, results that we received that we did not have. At least some of us perceived that, to have enough participation from the younger crowd in the actual participating in the meetings, but then also the surveys. So we're going to make a concerted effort to reach that group, which I think will be pretty interesting, at least for me, in the spring. We had the most, according to our, the consultant, Kim Lee Horn, who's leading us in the process, we had the most survey, most survey input, most input on the survey respondents, if that makes sense, in the whole state of Florida for all of the projects. Any other similar comp plan projects done throughout the state of Florida, we had the most people actually participate in the survey is what I'm trying to say. So that was, that was good news. Already touched, touched on legislative agenda items with Senate Bill 180. And then JPA roundtable meeting is coming up. I know the manager, hopefully the manager and the mayor at least, will attend that. That's the roundtable with all 14 cities. The county commission to see where we are, accountability on JPA's joint planning agreements. So I'm looking forward to that. I believe that's been scheduled and is coming up pretty soon here. And then lastly, as you know, we are working on transportation. That has been a huge, huge focus. Well, you know, for me being in here for years, it's, I've always talked about transportation and revenues and where that comes from and the issues with it. But it is particularly front and center this past year. So we'll make a couple of big decisions coming up, I think, as a county commission, I hope at least, from a policy level. So it's different, you know, policies is different than just, you know, making an ordinance or a resolution. But I'm hoping we'll make a policy change as a commission to allocate 8% of our general fund as a top-down policy, again, coming right off the top and for the, in future years for transportation projects. It would be the first, we do allocate out of the general fund now for transportation, but only up until about three or four years ago. It had been a period of 20 or 30 years where it had not been funded, transportation had not been funded out of a general fund. So I think that's an important part of the formula for transportation. We'll also, you're also hearing probably discussion about gas tax. So just everybody's clear on the transportation funding and what monies can be used for. I've covered this many times over the years. But again, it's always good. And I understand people are, get confused about it. And there's a lot of funds. But impact fees cannot be used for resurfacing. So that's some, that's one thing that I commonly am hearing that again. So even though in South Lake County, we have the highest impact fee that we're legally unable to, legally allowed to enact, that cannot be used for resurfacing roads. It can only be used for expansion, new additions, you know, new projects, maybe, maybe a few safety projects, depends on what the attorneys say and engineers say and how they can justify it according to the statute. So those impact fees, particularly in the South Lake District, are the highest that they can legally be. And we cannot use that money for resurfacing. That is currently out of the gas tax. And we do use some of our general fund now for that as well. And unfortunately, fortunately, some of the penny sales tax, which is the additional penny, there's six pennies that are collected by the state of Florida, one penny enacted by the voters in 2015 to go to infrastructure projects. Can go towards resurfacing and we use some of it for resurfacing. Personally, I would rather it not be. I think resurfacing is, is a, is a user fee by people that are here, whether you're 150,000 people or 500,000 people, is sort of proportional. More cars, the more, more, more of a user fee that you can enact, probably the more fair it is for all of us. So you're going to hear some pretty good discussion on the 23rd about the gas tax. There are 12 pennies that the state allow, enacted by law in 1983 for all counties to enact a gas tax. In Lake County, we only have seven that we're using. So there's five more that the county commission could enact or the voters of Lake County could enact as well, using up that remainder of 12 pennies to go towards only resurfacing. That money cannot be used for other things, which I've also had questions about as well. So it has to go only towards the resurfacing. Quite a bit of a backlog. You've heard me talk about this as well. And by the way, you, the city get, the town gets a portion of the gas tax. So if the, the five pennies, if that's enacted, the town gets a, I don't know the exact number, but the town would get a increased portion of that for your road projects, for your resurfacing. So there's a lot, there's a lot to, to, to talk about with transportation. I think that's probably where we're going to, at least from the top down, allocate out of, out of general fund. We'll look at gas tax. Impact fees are probably as high as they can be right now. We are looking at ways to reduce the cost of transportation as well. So we're going to start looking at asking builders to build the roads for us instead of going through our own RFP process, RFQ process. If the builders are there, they're building roads, might as well keep them going. They'll build it probably for two-thirds the cost that the county could build the roads. So we'll save some money there as well. Still about a $710 million backlog, anywhere from 700 to a billion dollars worth of backlog of, of roads to, to, to knock off here. So we'll do it a little piece at a time. But I remain optimistic about it, but there's some hard decisions ahead of us, so.
Did you say a billion dollars in resurfacing?
No, billion dollars in road projects, total, meaning, meaning resurfacing, you know, to, I can give you a presentation, maybe the best thing to do would be to give you the county presentation on resurfacing. Resurfacing is, you know, once you build a road, it's a liability. You've got to resurface it every 25 years. That backlog keeps growing. Just resurfacing is probably about $100 million just to resurface. We only collect five or $6 million now per year.
How much will the five cents give you?
That'll give us, that'll get us up to about 12 million.
A year?
Yeah, that will split with the cities. So it's helpful. It certainly knocks projects off the list. You know, what happens when you get a, a road that gets to a point where you're seeing limestone base is it's not much longer before that road is to a point of no repair and you actually have to resurface it at four times the cost. So. The point, the, 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 the goal is, is to get a lot of those level four, level threes, as we call them, level fives up to resurfaced and get them slowly off the list. If we can, for instance, if the gas tax were to pass, you're looking at about 10 years to finally get caught up on all the resurfacing. If it doesn't pass, it'll be 20 to 25 years plus.
So if it's a 25-year road, wouldn't you put in order which roads were done in the last 25 years and the years they were done? And then take the 100 million and the 10, 12 million and start fitting it in there? Do you have something like that order done?
There is a, there is a process, a prioritization. Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, we would. We, despite also what I've heard, there, there isn't favorite roads that get resurfaced more than others, ahead of others. It's, there is a, a, a objective way to, to do that, yeah.
Do you guys have like a plan we could look at and read?
I'll give you the, if you want, I will give you the presentation. If you, if you're, if you can't go to sleep, you can look at the 40-page presentation I'm going to give you. I think it's pretty interesting.
Me too.
But, but I'll give it to you. You can, you can post it.
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
Yeah. And interestingly enough in there, too, there's also, our engineer did a, a study. There's really no correlation, because obviously with taxes, it's not, it's not a fun thing to talk about, right? Nobody wants to talk about taxes. I don't want to. But the, the five pennies, the counties around us that have it, there's no correlation to actually increased gas prices. It was one, one county said it was like maybe $2 per, per month. But like, if you look at some of the counties that have the full 12 pennies, there's actually counties that actually have lower gas prices than us now. So that was, I thought that was kind of interesting as well. So I know that that's a concern about the, the increase in, in fuel prices too with that, so.
Does CRA suck a lot of money out of that, off down the back? Does CRAs take the money away?
Come on up here and ask your question, Randy.
Yeah.
Name, social security number.
The IRS knows that. My name is Randy Elman. I live at 16603 Lowery Road, Montverde, Florida. Did the CRA suck a lot of money out of that, that you would have gotten if there wasn't a CRA?
CRA would take money out of the county's general fund. I don't know the exact amount.
Is that why we're at this position to some extent now?
No. I think, I mean, I think the CRAs will have an effect on the general fund. We did, for many years, though, we weren't pulling out of the general fund for, for anything roads related, which I think it was, you know, not good. I think it should come from all buckets to make it even. But probably the biggest problem for roads, you know, the period of 2002, from my research at least, 2002 to 2006 or '07, right up to the Great Recession, there's a lot of money collected from impact fees. But the impact fees were not at the level, they weren't at their highest level, even during the high period of growth. Then the Great Recession hit and we did lower the impact fees or even suspended them for six months or so, if I recall. There wasn't anything coming in, so it really didn't matter. But I think it's that period of time that did a lot of, of cause, was a causation to the being behind on the backlog for the capital projects. Resurfacing, maybe the gas tax that should have been enacted way back then was not enacted as well.
But still, the CRA money has to stay within that CRA and it doesn't go to you, so you don't have the money to allocate to resurfacing the roads?
Well, CRA, yeah, CRA money would go towards, it comes out of the county general fund and would, yes, it would go back to, any TIF structure is that way, yeah. Now, when, you know.
I mean, we have a joke around here. I mean, I don't know if you're privy to it, but, you know, like, they'll have, has a CRA, big CRA supposedly. They have, what, $8 million to spend or whatever. But the joke is, well, we'll need a four-wheel drive, but they'll be on road, you know, golden roads. But you'll need a four-wheel drive to get there because the county roads would be, you know, hard to get there.
Yeah.
A Mad Max type thing, in case in base he's.
Yeah, they probably, I think you, they have a CDD. But, you know, a TIF structure, a tax increment finance structure is a CRA. A CRA has the-
But they can only use that money within the, that CRA.
Within the geographic CRA, yeah. Or a TIF structure. You could do TIFs, you could do a TIF structure. And that's what, that is, that is an option that we have talked about at the county, where the, the money is, you know, is a, as a way to demonstrate fiscal constraint. The money from a TIF would go exclusively towards transportation projects. Now, you could do that in a TIF, yeah.
I guess my question as a taxpayer and representing other taxpayers or just speaking out loud is, is we going to have to pay this five cent increase because of the CRAs in the past have sucked the money and now, now we have to make up the, you know, extra?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the amount that it, that the CRAs cost us from the general fund of the county, but, yeah.
I'm just saying, it's food for thought.
Yeah.
Sean, I'd actually like to ask, I, maybe I sort of stole some of my questions there. But can you, you know, I don't need an answer right now, but can you get it to the county?
Yeah, I can, I can get that number.
I think what Randy was, Randy, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like what he's somewhat suggesting is that because we're paying, other people are paying into the CRA, that money that would be going, that's going into those CRAs, it's taking it away from other avenues and other, other projects, like road, roads.
County roads. County roads is taking money away from county roads, like the CRA that was proposed here. It can't, you know, in other words, we'll have great roads, which is good, I guess. But if we were going to the grocery store, we're going to need a four-wheel drive maybe, you know, just.
I hope not.
Don't you thought we were talking CRA tonight?
So hypothetically, tongue-in-cheek, Sean, if you take a county road and add two feet on either side, that's a new road, right? So that qualifies under new road, not a resurfaced road?
Well, yeah, I mean, actually, there is some capacity achieved by taking in a substandard road and bringing it up to a standard, yeah. So there, there could, in some cases, that will work.
It's like a third of Lake County then, right?
All orange, old Orange Grove roads? Yeah, it's a problem. Yep.
Can't resurface it, but if you add two feet on either side of it, it becomes a new road and therefore qualifies for upfront funding that you're going to have to fight for to get resurfacing, right?
You can use impact money there.
Yeah, fortunately, you know, so not to, yeah, I, we could talk about it all night. But the, the impact fees for a four-lane road, it's $10 million a mile to build a four-lane road. And, and the South Lake District where we have the highest impact fees, that's about what we collect in one full year.
Wow. A mile?
Is a, a mile's worth of road. So the, the cost is crazy high right now.
Both the roads are already there. Like I said, you add two feet on either side, yeah. See, you save $8 million by, yeah.
Yes, I got you. I, I'm with you.
Thank you, thank you.
All righty. Let's keep it rolling. How about some council people? Grant, you got anything you want to talk about?
Yeah, just going door-to-door, talking to residents, couple main concerns, one being the pickleball courts. I know we talked about it previously, but definitely would like to see something done with that. And then another one would be water quality issues. I've had a couple residents say that they've had a lot of sediment in their water, their drinking water. And just wondering, is that a continual thing or is that something that should be temporary? And they're on opposite ends of the town, too. So same problem, complete opposite sides of town.
Sure. I'll follow up, Chuck, see if there's anything going on. Generally, when they say sediment, generally what it is, is air in the line. And we'll get some of that when we're, have a lot of line flushing going on. And I know we have three large two-inch meters out currently. And I want to say about a month ago, they flushed the hydrants over at the Hills of Montverde, which pulls a lot of water, you know, and kind of gets some, you get some air and movement going in there when that happens. So it's probably related to the water flows lately. I haven't heard anything. About a month ago, we did ask complaints. We, we checked on it. We had the pneumatic tank actually had an issue where it was actually pumping air into the line. And so I know Chuck got that fixed. Nothing water quality. Our water is tested daily. So, you know, there's no water quality issues as far as the drinking, but aesthetics, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, one of the gentlemen had a filter that he showed me. It was two filters, actually. They places every three months. And they were just completely, fully, they were brown. So, and then that was over in Longridge. And then the other one was over on Third Street. So, and they were having kind of the same complaint.
Got you. Yeah, it sounds like some manganese in the line, which is kind of a little bit natural occurring. But those areas, if you would just jot those down for me, on those areas you visit, if you saw something specific and let people know when they see that. Because what we'll do is we'll send the guys out to actually go flush the lines in the area to try to move some of that stuff out if it's, if there's some buildup. That's really one of, you mentioned Longridge, that's one of the areas why we want to put some additional loops in the line. We generally have more of those problems when they're on a low part of the line or a line that's dead in it somewhere where it kind of goes in and circles development, but doesn't go anywhere. So that's why we're going to create some of these loops with this Chaffee funds to help that water quality.
The last one, how was the, the contractor for Lakeside selected?
It was competitive bid. And it's one of those things, you have to go with the lowest bidder.
So we might be stuck with that same contractor in the future?
We're going to look at some provisions. Some, yeah, I mean, I don't know. We have to go with the lowest bid on it. The next bid was, I want to say, over half a million dollars higher than him. And really, one of the keys I've, I've tasked with our engineering team is to try to get more people to bid. When that bid went out, we just don't have a lot of interest- When that bid went out, um, we just don't have a lot of interested people. And what, what we run into with a small town, and we run this with a lot of things we do, is, um, we're, we're too small for a lot, a lot of the contractors, because all that paperwork I showed you, they have their whole end of stuff they have to do when they do city projects, cause they're required under statute. So we're, we're too small for a lot of the big ones, and a lot of the smaller ones, they can't get the bonding. And so we're in that spot, when you do a road, that's in that half million to million and a half range or any capital project, that's kinda what we ran into at the library. We didn't get a lot of bids, because if we were just in that spot where, you know, a couple million dollars isn't worth it. Like on 455, when we bid that project, um, you know, that's gonna be multimillion dollar bid projects at time. I would expect we're gonna have dozens of contractors hopefully, um, bid on that. Um, but, Andrew, we've been working with our team, our engineering team, to try to identify some more local contractors that might be able to, to bid on the, for instance, the porter. But at the end of the day, it's, it's a competitive, we gotta follow statute. If they meet all the guidelines and they're the lowest bid, we have to give it to them. Within, you know, there's some, a couple occasions where you could do some things, but.
That's it.
Hey, Joe.
So I have, um, one thing, I guess, in this, in reference to the election that we're in right now. Um, are, are we gonna enforce the rules? I'm thinking how I wanna word this, um, equally, I guess, in reference, I'm gonna just say signage. I know Mike Stone had got up and discussed some stuff, um, but in reference to signage and sign placement, being in the right of way and things of that nature. It was a big thing last year, um, Carol had signs removed, diet signs removed, a lot of signs removed. We're not in the right of way. And I, I, I was gonna bring it up earlier, but I was hoping, previously, but I was hoping it wasn't gonna be an issue, but it appears it is, so I guess that's my question for you, about enforcing on the signs.
I think you know the answer to that, but I, I'll go ahead and state that.
You're gonna tell me to submit a code complaint?
What's that?
You're not gonna tell me to submit a code complaint, right?
No, well, and, and the issue, I think, with your sign way back a year ago, was one sign the public works made a mistake up on the corner of 455. That's all I recall being an issue that was accidentally removed, because they didn't know the right-of-way line. But with that said, your signs have to be on private property down the town right-of-way. If, if, if you see one that's not, again, you have to make a code complaint. However, if they're in the right-of-way, as town has times, that, at time, they will remove them out of the right-of-way. They pick them up, we don't go replace them, we put them in the back of the truck and they get put in a pile. And that's how we did it, that's how we did with the elected le, election, where you kinda insinuate it, like we were doing it fairly. I think we probably picked up 40 signs over that election that were in the right-of-way, so we can't do it every day. It happens right around Mount Verde, when staff is at its busiest, trying to get ready for Mount Verde, but as time allows, they, they get picked up.
We could go back and forth on whether I feel it was fair or not. I mean, again, I had signs that were removed in the morning, I replaced them, and then they were out in the afternoon personally, just saying. I had many signs that were replaced. However, I, I even said, I guess you're gonna ask me to do a code complaint, and that's what you need me to do. I'm not gonna file code complaints on residents, but.
Well, and it's, uh, I said the town will pick them up as we see them, as time allows, in the right-of-way. We're not gonna drive around every day and be sign police, but as the town public works has time, if they see them in the right-of-way while they're doing the trash cleanup, they will, they pick them up and remove them. I, I can't have that be their priority task to do, but I expect people running for election, you guys are sitting behind here, the ordinances, I expect the people that are running for election to do their best to follow the code and not make it a problem for town staff. Everybody, it's easy to figure out where right-of-way lines are, you could go on Lake GIS, you can look it up where they are. But generally, if you're behind utility lines, 99% of the time, you're probably out of the right-of-way. So that's the general rule we have to look for, is are you behind the phone lines, the telephone lines and things out there? And generally, you're okay.
Okay.
And I, I really haven't seen too many issues. I think this so far, this group has done a stellar job, so I really, I think we've had a couple signs that we've, um, had to move, so.
Okay, to be continued, I guess.
Alrighty, Carol, do you have anything?
Um, I do, but it's coming up on agenda, so I'll hold off.
Yeah, hold on.
Yeah, I, I wanna bring up a cemetery issue. I've got four questions that I'd like to present to the public and, uh, council and give direction, what we need to do. One of them is, um, our cemetery is only so big, have we thought about what do we do next for our next cemetery when we get filled up? Maybe we go to Stetcher? Um, where do we intern our residents, because we only have so much room? That's, that's one question. City Claremont and a lot of cities have ordinances that will not allow a husband and wife to be buried in the same plot. It's called double stacking. Claremont refuses, their cemetery is no double stacking, a lot of them are, which I don't know if our policy is that way. I don't think it is, because residents, husband and wife, spouses are side by side. I don't know if that's a thing, they'll go forward and say, hey, that will save space, just throwing it out there. Um, also, it was suggested, and I've thought about this for a long time too, a crypt. I don't know if a crypt, a small crypt would help save on space if we put urns in the ground? If they would, residents would say, hey, I'd like to have a crypt, and we put the remains in a crypt versus the ground? That's the third one, suggestions please. The fourth one, um, I don't know how you all feel, but this knocked me off. One of our residents shared this with me, that within, I think, nine months on his street, he had four residents pass away. Most people in town, when I shared his names with a couple of our older people ago, I had no idea. That being said, we do a lot for our town. The council, uh, and the town has policy that if you're buried, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, if you're interned in the city cemetery, you are, the town will provide arrangement of flowers, which I think is fantastic. I would fund that to the hilt. But I'd like to go one more step, and I need to ask Anita and Paul and the councils' thoughts on this and residents. I would almost like to see in our newsletter that if someone passes that you know of them, your neighbor, to say in our newsletter condolences to fill in the blank, the loss of your spouse or whatever, on such and such a date, because a lot of us know a lot of people, but you get busy with life and you forget that something happened. You know, only moved out of town, no, they passed, I didn't know that. And I felt kinda somewhat ashamed, one of our residents, it's like hadn't been here for nine months, because the husband passed in December of last year. I'm going, I just found out about it, it just really, I felt that was something like, and nobody knew anything about it, so. I don't know, Anita, are we allowed to do that? I mean, if there's a privacy that, um.
Yeah, that would be something we'd have to look into.
Okay. But I just hope it'd be kind of a neat idea, that at least, you, at least you would know that someone passed or lost a loved one. But there's other three, um, I'd like to kick it around and see what we can do, like what are we gonna do? They run out of space, do a crypt thing? Um, thoughts please, comments? I love the rain, thank you, Lord. He sent rain this today and this past week and this couple weeks. It's been nice to see water standing in places that tells all where we need to have stormwater issues. They stand out pretty clear on that, but, uh, that's all I've got. Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alrighty, um, I wanna go back to what I said before about priorities, and I got thinking about, you know what? I do have one priority, and I wanted to explain it. Um, what we have in town, and said this a few times, so bear with me if you've already heard it. What we have in town is the Osgood property, and then the Belliclina property on Ridgewood, that is 58 acres. Osgood property is pretty much done, it's gonna be 130 something homes. That's it, it's built out. We don't ever have to worry about anything being built down there we don't want. So we are gonna have single-family homes. Belliclina has 58 acres on Ridgewood, goes down behind the old, um, welding shop. And then they have 10 acres down near where they leveled all those houses, that they wanna join with, um, the 58 acres. So it's gonna be 68 acres, probably. And, um, from what I understand, they're bringing forward, um, better than what our density is. And ours is two acre, two homes per acre gross, so they wanna do less than that. So that's gonna be all built out, we don't have to worry about what's gonna happen on that 58 acres. The only part, property that's left is if you go around and roundabout and you go toward, down on Ridgewood, towards the mobile home park, on the right side is 37.5 acres that borders Belliclina. There, it's right there. And, and do real estate all the time, so I can tell you, in my opinion, the only customer for that property is Belliclina. So hopefully, they buy it, and hopefully, they put their less than two homes per acre in there, and, um, and they fence it. And then when they fence it, all the revenue that they pay us, we don't have to spend behind the fence. That's a whole nother thing. So what's left in the town of Mount Verde, after those three areas, is on Ridgewood, the large pieces, the 10-acre spots right off of, by Lake Street, and, um, Ridgewood, there's probably, if you add it all up, there's probably around 25 acres in there. If, isn't, how much? Well, look more, okay, so 18 acres. So that 18 acres, in my mind, is the only threat that town of Mount Verde has, of something getting built there that we don't want. Okay, so on this year's elect, the charter change that's being proposed on the, um, on the ballot is, um, and I gotta be careful how I explain this, right? If I can explain, okay.
You're allowed to explain it.
Okay, I can explain it. I can't tell you my opinion on it, but I can explain it. Um, uh, the charter change will be that any, any charter, any council that's up here going forward after you guys vote on it, that wanted to do more than two home, two homes per acre on that property, would have to have four out of five council agree with it. Okay, so that's what's on the ballot. I think it's pretty obvious how to vote on that one, when you go to vote, if you'd like the way Mount Verde is. So I wanna say that tho, those land spots that I just said, and this charter change on the ballot, that's my number one priority for Mount Verde, to get that done. And then Mount Verde's done, there's no more building in Mount Verde, there's no, um, apartments, there's no any, you know, stuff. I just, yesterday, went up to Fosgate to look at how, at Throme's stomach, the bridge up there, and, and Lake County got it all paved, and this looks pretty much done to me. But unfortunately, I looked to the left, and there's 25 acres, right at the top of the hill where the bridge is, and a big sign saying, "Brand-new homes being built to rent." And that is the product that the builders are doing now. If you look up in Atlanta, for example, over 30% of the new homes that were built in Atlanta last year in 2024, were homes to rent, brand-new homes being built to rent. That's what's being built on that 25 acres, 93 rental homes, okay? And that's what's coming to Florida eventually. And it's been slow getting here, because there's, if you look it up in the country, there's a lot of that going on, because people can't afford to buy a house, so their developers are building homes to rent. And, you know, the worst thing that happens for them is the business goes bad and they just sell the houses. So that's not a problem for them. So that's why I'm bringing it up, is that my number one priority is to get Mount Verde built out the way the people in Mount Verde want it. And I, I think we're, we're really close to doing it right now. So please go and vote, and please, um, read the, read what it says, what that, um, charter change is all about. Kinda explained it tonight. And if you wanna talk to me about it, please call me, and I'll talk to you as Joe Weincoop, and not as the mayor, and be able to talk to you about it. Is that right? Okay, I gotta be careful. Um, okay, that's what I got for tonight. Yes, come on up, you gotta come up, we wanna get you on film. You never know who's gonna see it.
Hi, I'm Georgia Forehand, 17235 First Street. Um, I have a question about Anthony Island.
Where?
Anthony Island, wasn't that donated to the town?
Oh, the, um, Buffalo Island, yeah.
I was gonna say D-Lo, but yeah.
It's underway, it hasn't happened yet, Anita's working on it right now.
Well, what are y'all gonna do with it?
We have no idea.
No?
I, I don't know, I'm just speaking for myself. I don't have any idea, but.
Yeah, you were saying there's no more property, but I was gonna read him.
Uh, we can't build on it, because the, the requirements that Mr. Anthony has put on giving it to the town, we, we can't do nothing on it. You can do a park and stuff, which Anita's figuring it all out right now. We'll be able to look, talk about next year, probably.
Like a conservation easement, he'll, he'll, you can, like a conservation easement, a lot of that's going on in agriculture, where protruding, it's never developed, if it stays rangeland until, that's it, nothing happens.
It's not that big, it's only four or five acres.
Did he take the people out of the way?
Huh?
Did he take the animals away?
No, they're there. But they're, but they're, we don't get it till they pass away. You know, I hope they live another 100 years.
Oh, okay.
Not getting it next week.
That's all I have.
Okay, alrighty, let's move on. Um, okay, our, uh, finance report, we started with $4,859,086. We ended up with $4,344,991.02. Um, discussion points, let's move on to Franklin Pond, we're gonna talk about where we are with that. Why don't you lead that one, Paul?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, there were some questions brought up about the water quality of Franklin Pond, and what the council could do to assist the neighbors in, in proving that. And just so everybody knows, I think everybody knows where Franklin Pond is, but there's approximately 17 homes that, or 17 lots that directly, um, back up to Franklin Pond. And it is, I'm shown on the assessor's website, as a state-owned pond to lake. Couple solutions I want to talk about is, obviously, on, on Lakeside, we're starting to do some work, uh, for some stormwater, which is, um, uh, the end result will be less releases into the storm pipe that goes into, um, the pond from Lakeside. Um, you could see those, um, detention ditches being built to kinda hold the water back and soak into the grounds. That's, uh, one thing that's actively being done. Um, the next is, this is, um, coming from that chaffy planning grant that we discussed, the $19 million. This is kind of hypothetical, um, layout, where, um, off of Hickory Avenue, we have a, a pretty strong erosion water runoff coming off of Hickory of sand and silt and things along that line, and all of that, um, ends up into Franklin Pond. So this is just the start of the routing of how we could deal with that. So in that area, um, along those streets, you'll probably see some type of actual curb and piped gutter system, um, to collect that water and to try to get that sediment. Um, they're, um, part of the plan, uh, we're still, you know, this is early on, but I'm sure, uh, before it goes in, there's gonna be some type of infertile, um, baffle, um, system, like we did on Lowery's system, to kinda help collect those sediments, cause we have to, there's really no land available for stormwater detention in that area, so we'll have to look at some type of baffle system before it goes into there. But that's just kind of out of that planning study, uh, that we talked about doing those, um, roads. And so that will be, um, a help, another solution, that's gonna be on its way pretty soon with that grant money. Um, and finally, um, if the neighbors in that area, um, a, a lot of the, um, yards are directly mowed in, um, right toward the water in that area, and there's not a, um, a lot of vegetation along the lake. And, and really, um, if you recall, a couple years ago, um, Mr. Peacock kinda organized a group of homeowners, and we were able to get a grant to purchase the duck potato plants. And we planted those all along the pond, all along the lake for people that wanted to plant them in, and they actually have done very well. And, um, Mr. Peacock came a couple meetings ago and talked about how he's starting to see water quality improvement. So I reached out to Mary Ann, who does our, who's our water professional and deals with stormwater. Um, she will be able to secure us, um, some additional grant money to purchase that. So if any of those neighbors in that area are listening, and really, spring's gonna be the time to plant these, um, is the best time to pop these in, so we'll kinda organize that. But, um, I will be able to get some grant funds to purchase those plants. We just need that community to kinda organize themselves and kinda get their group together, or volunteers, and go around. And you don't have to plant them across your entire back of your property, but if you plant, you know, two-thirds and still leave a knife access, they're, they're not a very tall-growing plant, but they really pull those nutrients out, and those negative nutrients that are affecting, um, the lake. So those are kind of the solutions I would kinda like to, just as a follow-up that I've looked into, that would be, um, a solution to help with that water quality in the area. So, um, if council knows any of those, um, owners directly that live there, um, we need someone to help organize. The duck potato, I think, is gonna be the long-term solution for that and the stormwater. And all this could, um, be starting really next year easily, so hopefully, we can get that water quality improved. Any questions, council? You.
Is there a swale around there?
George, you got anything? Come on up.
Yeah, Paul.
I was just asking, is there a swale around Franklin Pond?
Not all the way around, it, the, the houses that were built when that code, whatever, for the last six or seven years, so some of them do have. It, the, the houses that were built when that code, whatever, for the last six or seven years, so some of them do have swells and some of them don't. So, I mean, that would, that obviously would be something, that would be nice to be down. That's something we may have to look into, make sure the swells that the houses were required to, make sure they're kinda still there. But, but yeah, fertilizer runoff definitely could be a.
The plants that we did in Lake Florence, the school let us do it all in front of their property. So it was real easy to do it there because they obviously didn't go out there and pull them. And let, on Franklin Pond, it's on homeowners. So they have to really understand what we're doing there and not hurt them later. You know, it worked real well where we did it with the school there.
It did. And we, we did have a couple, um, quite, well, probably quite a few little homeowners that did some around there, but the school was the big, you're right, was the big target.
It made it easier.
It made it a lot easier.
This is a homeowner right here on the lake.
One seven seven four O'Neil, George Gant, yeah, the, the pond is full of hydrilla and muck, I mean weeds. You can't go from here to there without taking the tuck off the crops and the muck. You can't, you can't fish in them anymore. That's not gonna do anything. They spent two million dollars putting those plants out in Lake Apaca and four million dollars getting them the hell out. Because they didn't work and they, they won't work. That, that's nothing but hydrilla, it's becoming, every day it rains, the whole back half of that pond now is muck. You can't do anything with it. We can't swim in it, we can't fish in it, we can't do anything. And those little plants are not gonna do anything. It needs to be shot. And then talk about a fountain, on the solar fountain. And it had a fountain, the town had a fountain in originally, but they took it out for some reason, I don't know why. But the houses, the first ones had that and they had the fountain in, they never had problems. It's only been a problem since these heavy rains and it's running right down. You can watch the water that lifts in the weeds as I sit on their porch and I say, boom, boom. It's coming right down that road. And until that stops, and, and you gotta get it out. It needs to be shot and then put an air raid in it, just like they did over here on, on this big one. Why do we put six on over there but none here? We're real people, you know, we pay taxes to the town and we expect that for it. That's not gonna solve the problem. Nor, I don't think you're gonna get five people to wanna put that crap in their backyard, I don't. And I, you know, my old girlfriend, I don't wanna see that. And then you'll have snakes and lizards and all other crap. We don't need it. It's what needs to be done right.
What's that company we used at Four Lakes and, um, when they had the problem a few years ago?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've, I've had it sprayed there before on, on Franklin. But yeah, he, you know, they did mention that was part of the issue, all the vegetation's been cleared around the corners of the lake from the properties there. Oh, it's um, Lake Doctors that we use.
Wonder if they, they seem to know what they're doing.
Yeah, we could definitely have.
I'm no expert.
We need to, if the town is going to do anything, I mean, our other issue is we don't have, there's not an access easement for the town or Lake Doctors that get there, so we have to. It's, it's a hundred percent completely surrounded with no town access easement through there. So that's something we do need to look at if, if the town's gonna do anything long-term there. We, we could definitely look at, there's probably, um, the Florence Lake, um, there was some grants for aerators. That cycle probably rolls around in the spring, we could look at that and see if there's anything. But you know, again, we'll have to try to acquire some easements and property to do that. And I'll probably have to also have our attorney take a look at that.
We gotta know that, that if, if the people that know what they're doing recommend that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't have a clue. You know, Lake Florence was a whole different thing, it was the temperature of the water, that's what the aerators was changing.
Correct.
And Lake County is half of that lake on the other side. They actually funded a big part of it, the Mount Verde Academy did it, did like twenty-five thousand. And the county and Mount Verde Academy paved most of it all. But um, we've been maintaining it, but we get the, you know, Jim Peacock does it free, pretty much for twenty years now, fifteen probably.
See if we could find one more.
We need to find, we, we need a company to tell, or somebody to tell us what, what to do, I, you know.
Yeah, I, I could definitely get some more research and, and get into that and.
You know, if somebody wanted to take a boat ride, I could paddle them around. You can't even use the electric motors anymore to go, they're just so thick, you know, it's, it's just solid. You can't cast, you cast out before you put the thing in the water, you hook up the weed, you can't fish, you can't do anything.
Your, the Franklin Pond had the same issue, similar issue to what Lake Florence has in different sizes. Both of them don't have water coming in, water going out. It just, and it, it sits there. So that was the big problem in Lake Florence, which I think is gonna be their, that problem.
The last two years because of the excessive rain, and it has, I've been, I've been there for twenty years and it was fine, it was getting clear. But the last two years with the heavy rains and the constant hammering, it's just, you can see it, the whole back half is, is a different color, it's brown.
Well, you know what you got different now is, um, like, all the new homes that were put on Franklin Pond, there is no empty lots on Franklin Pond anymore. So those, those yards get cut and fertilized and now you got a Lake Apaca.
Do some work, you could sneak in from that old water system place down at the bottom of the hill. There's a chunk down there that nobody looks over. And that's about the one area you probably could get in.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying there's, there's more houses that fertilize their grass around Franklin Pond. And fertilizers killer for the lake, you know that.
It's a, it's a nutrient overload. But they're pretty, they're pretty hard, they're, they're, I have a service and they don't go near the water. I mean, they, they don't go near.
Well, no, I'm saying they, they put fertilizer in the yard and the rain goes through it and it goes down, washes it down into the water. And that causes, but we need people to know what they're doing.
Swell, so I don't know.
Yeah, but I really think we need somebody that knows what they're doing to come and give us direction on this one. And it might be way too expensive, so we just fill it in with dirt, I don't know.
At least we can get something done.
Something, yeah. No, we're gonna.
We would appreciate anything you could do if you could go.
Okay, I think everybody's okay with moving forward, with looking at it harder.
She, she, she was someone observed, she saw what it looked like, that's, you get down there, you can't go even, even a paddle in the water, it's so thick.
You stay on top of us, make sure we get it done.
I will, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Paul, can FWC do something about that? They're in charge of.
Say that again?
FWC, they're in charge of spraying waterways and maintaining them. You said it's a state pond, is there any chance we could reach out to them and not pay any money and have them take care of it?
I, you might know better, Sean, I don't know.
One thing, one thing I'll look into is the Lake County Water Authority has a marsh monster, which would go, I think we still have it. I would go around and, and clean up a lot of the, the, um, you know, the vegetation, the emergent vegetation that's there. Some of the muck, so we could definitely look at that as well. I think it's a multi-pronged approach with planting the plants as well along the shoreline and checking those, um, those ditches too. But once you let me look into, if you want, I'll look into the availability of that marsh monster if we still have it, I think. Which a marsh monster, again, it, you put it in the lake, but we'd have to have access. And uh, it would go through and, and just eat all that stuff that's floating around there and the, the muck and everything. Wouldn't get it down to the mineral, to the sand, but you could, you could take off a lot of that top. Yeah, so we'll, I'll look at it for you.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I, I mean, really, and also the first thing we need to do is we gotta figure out how do we get some legal access. This, this platid area is so old, new plats, there's access along the lots, usually five foot, ten foot for an access. I just don't wanna say a handshake and we use it, then something gets hurt and the town. So we'll, we'll need to look into that a little bit, figure out how we can access these one through there.
Doesn't the road by Gun Shop go all the way down to the water?
Look on the map there, it looks like there's a right away.
There's um, the, the right away ends and there's the, uh, well, that person from Claremont that owns the, uh, oh gosh, mayor that owns the building back there. Yeah, so there is a property that breaks it.
Okay, we can figure that out.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can figure that out. Alright.
The people that own that body are interested in getting it cleaned up, there's nothing on that.
It's in their best interest, yeah.
If it works.
Okay.
We'll, we'll reach out to them and see if they're willing to work with us.
Alright, thank you, George. Let's move on to discussion related, related on the school speed limits cameras. How are we gonna do this? Anita, you gonna explain it or?
Uh, I, I'll go ahead and start. I, I kinda provided the council with a staff report that included the state statue and a little bit of information about the camera system. And um, I didn't do anything formal, I just kinda wanted to give you guys some of the backgrounds of what you can do, can't do. There are companies out there that will come put the cameras in, the split usually somewhere around the fifty-fifty split of the camera system to run the system. It's, it's, um, I guess I just need, I, I guess I gave you all the information, I need to know what else you need from me to want to talk about or move on with it or not. Um, at this point, the other elephant in the room is we're gonna be doing some major work on four fifty-five. And from a, just a logical standpoint, putting a camera system that we may have to move, you know, six or eight months later. It might behoove us to wait till, or at least have the discussion as we do the road work. Once we get the road established, maybe put it in at that standpoint. But that's just a suggestion I throw out to you. If you wanna move forward with the camera.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna be working on that road, so then we might as well just wait. But if you can move it forward while we're waiting, so we have it ready to go at the end of the eight months or, or whatever.
I was gonna say, Mount Verde Academy needs to be involved in this, I know you've got that down there discussions within, there's kinda cart ahead of the horse. If they don't want it, we don't really need to go down that road. And like, I would like to see what they're, how they feel about it, positives, negatives.
I, I have been talking with them, I won't, I won't speak for them, but they're aware of the conversation and we've had some initial conversations about it. But I'm sure at some point they'll come speak, whether or not.
I'd rather see raised walkways there at that section, because that will slow people down anyway. And we wouldn't need cameras then. My concern for cameras is the cost. My understanding is that, that it's being subsidized by the tickets? Is that how that works?
Yeah, there, there will be no cost to the town except for the cost related to verifying the tickets with a law enforcement officer. But then you have the revenue from the ticket to do that. And that's all controlled by statute.
Alright, so that's what we're paying them now, so it's about seventy-five an hour, right?
So there, there's, on the ticket part of it, there's the ticket, I believe is a hundred dollars and the town keeps sixty. Usually thirty goes to the camera and the town gets thirty, then that's what the town would use to pay for the law enforcement officer to review it.
I, I still think raised walkways would solve that whole problem for there. And if we're gonna be redoing the roads anyway.
You mentioned that earlier in your presentation, didn't you, that there would be raised walkways there?
Yeah, yeah, that, um, that's correct. If, if council is okay with that final plan, I, I think that's the approach we're taking is to put a, kind of a raised speed bump walkway in on those crosswalk areas. I, I think, I, I believe Mr. Roberts, I've talked to you a little bit, Mr. Warrenelli, I know you've been supportive of that in the past. And um, you know, I need to kinda circle around on everybody, we haven't got to that design phase yet, because we just got the money for it, you know, literally a month ago.
You mean a bridge?
Yeah, that would be nice. Now, where the crosswalks are, just basically making the crosswalks like a speed hump of some sort. There is in the Florida Green Book, F dot Florida Green Book, there is a, a walkway that is approved that is kind of a raised up walkway. So it's more visible where the paint is, it kinda just comes up and flattens a little bit.
We're a good year away from that.
We're a year, yeah, I mean, either of these, we would be a year away probably by, you know, with the camera system, by the time we do the RFPs and the ordinances and everything. It would take nine months to pull that together anyway.
Handicap accessible too, correct? The, the raised walkways, they're gonna go from the sidewalk to the east street.
Yeah, they have to be, yeah.
Alright.
Did I read that these cameras are only operational during school hours or thirty before, thirty after?
That's, that's correct, um, and that's school hours, the flashing light camera hour is basically thirty minutes, that, but that's correct.
Come on up, Brian.
Hey, everyone, Brian Rubio, one six five four eight Magnolia Terrace. I just had a quick question, so I guess what prompted this, or even this ending up on here for further consideration? Like, is there any data, is there any injuries? I mean, how many crashes have, have, happened that, you know, were due to high speed? Like, I guess like, what's, what's the reasoning behind even looking into this? I was just curious to know if there's data, studies, accident reports, anything?
Yeah, I mean, we, we do have, um, unfortunately, our, our latest data, we haven't been able to pull our camera systems. The counties don't collect the data, or, or one that we have working doesn't collect the data. But we have pulled data in the past and we've provided the council and we, we've literally on four fifty-fives in that sections. And we've had some speeds up to seventy miles an hour there at some points. And, you know, we've, um, I know our law enforcement officers have been busy in the school zones with, you know, they don't, most time don't even write till they're fifteen over. And they've written several tickets in the school areas. I don't have that exact number. The bigger thing I see is when we have an accident on the turnpike and Google routes you through the town of Mount Verde, those dump trucks just fly through here. And I have seen some pretty, I haven't seen any accidents, but I've seen it pretty close. It's, um, with that said, I, I don't think there, there's not a decision being made here tonight, it's just a, do we discuss and move forward? So I think that's, that's why we have it, is we're, we're bringing information to council, see what else they want.
I brought up that question, because if you guys are gonna consider it further, have, you know, some solid data, recent data, you know, and I would say, you know, large sample sizes, not, you know, just when you think it's gonna be, you know, high speed and time, I don't know. I just, I was just wondering that. Um, also, something else that I, I did read in that packet, it, it, I guess, so Eric, so just so I understand, everyone basically gets paid on this, the town gets paid, the county gets paid, the cops get paid. So it generates revenue for everyone, is this accurate?
I don't know the word revenue, there's in the statute, there are certain money, some goes to the crossing guard program, some goes to public safety, some goes to the town administration program. So yeah, there, there's obviously revenue, there's a hundred dollar ticket that's divided up multiple ways.
So the town does get some type of revenue?
Correct, correct.
Right, and we don't, we don't pay anything for the equipment. It's a company that puts it in, we buy nothing. So that's, that's attractive for me, I don't have to spend any money.
Yeah, and I, I don't think it's the case, I don't think anybody is saying, let's do this for revenue, because by the time we pay our law enforcement's to, you know, look and review the tickets and all that. I think it's, I'm, the, the goal is, is hopefully not to ever have a ticket. You know, that's, that's what I would love to see in the town of Mount Verde is we don't have speeding tickets, because everybody is being a good driver. I think that's what we're aiming for.
Yeah, I agree, I just, you know, I always look at it from the perspective of, you know, if you're gonna invest all this time after, you know, there has to be some type of data there, you know, directing that route, there is it, what's the point?
Well, what we have now that, is the speed signs that blink, they keep, they, um, get data on the speed people are going. And we, um, we can download that. And we've done that quite a few times and it's shocking, um, the speed that they go. I'd say the average on going out of town, it used to be sixty, fifty-five, sixty.
Is that data available on the, on the website?
No.
Those residents look at it? Can you request it?
Um, I don't know, we haven't pulled it in a while, probably.
I mean, I should have it, but I, yeah, I mean, right now I can't pull it, because this, this, the thing, they haven't worked since the hurricane, so we got, we gotta get repairs. Chuck's been out there trying to mess with it. Um, gosh, I wanna say it was about eighteen months ago, we did two studies, but I'm sure I have it somewhere, I could see if I could find it for you and dig it up and stuff.
That'd be old data, yeah. You're welcome.
Brian, when, on Saturday and Sunday, when the crotch rockets and the sports clubs come running through town, the camera will catch them when the cops aren't there. And to me, uh, that's been the biggest thing, is that everybody can come through town on Fosgate and do whatever they want. Because they know the cops are, FHP is there sporadically, so it's a crap ship. So they're gonna come through, everybody in town, I think, for the most part can say, on Saturdays or Sundays, you'll hear the crotch rockets coming in from four fifty-five by the old Pete Place. And by the time they're going through town, it's, man, they're here and they're gone. And there's no way to slow them down, FHP won't chase them because of legal aspects. But a camera will sure catch them and you're not gonna lie about a camera with your picture and your crotch rocket and the license plate going through there. So from that point of view, if it worked, I would say, yeah, I'm really in favor of having something like that.
The, um, the speed clubs too, those, um, um, foreign car speed clubs. And they come hauling after, from fifty through Mount Verde and up to Ferndale. And I've been involved in them and they, they pass me, no problem. And I'm not gonna slow.
Yeah, which is fine, but if there's data showing, because if you have two, let's say bikes, you know, racing down the street and there's, I don't know, a thousand cars that went through there in, I don't know, twelve hours. You know, you do that race, your calculation, like, okay, so you're gonna spend all this time and effort to just catch those two racing bikes, you know, this, this data is what I'm saying.
It's, it's different, like, um, like you got, you live on that side, you don't hear it, you don't see it. You live on Fosgate. I, I live in downtown Mount Verde, so I see it all the time. And I happen to see it come through the school and then go up the other side, because my house, I can see both, both points. And on the weekend, it's very fast. Come sit, come have coffee down there, you'll see.
Again, I was just, you know, asking about the data, because you can see what you want, you know, I could look at a car and say, oh, that's going sixty miles, it's going thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
So, but that's it.
So these are only gonna be active on school hours, correct? Right, so all of that's. Right, so all of that's irrelevant, whether they're speeding on weekends?
The signage being there in place, it says-
Right, but they're not taking pictures though.
Yeah, they're not actually taking pictures with the sign saying that there's a camera there. They're not gonna know the difference unless they watch our video right now, so.
Plus, they're gonna hear about it, because people are getting tickets and going online. It's funny, when, um, FHP's on Fosgate, um, the, the motorcycle clubs will, um, be texting each other. And the FHP has those, um, text messages watched. All right.
Anything council would like staff to do at this point, or just bring it back later, or what, what would you like?
I don't know if you gotta work real hard on it, since we're gonna be tearing up the road anyway. I guess get the information.
I'd like to hear the academy's opinion about it, at least sometime, or maybe they could send an email and we could see to know how they feel about it.
Most definitely. Um, then I'll, I'll work on also, try and, we're gonna try to get our signs working again here, uh, if we can.
If they were gonna be active twenty-four seven, I'd be behind that, but I don't wanna, I don't, I don't see, or unless you can show me some data that shows that people are doing sixty in a school zone. I, I don't wanna police our residents, I guess, on that. I mean, I'm all, you know where I stand on it. I, I want people speeding, but at the end of the day, I think we're doing a good enough job with police being there for that, cause these are only for school time, so.
I would just be kinda curious to have a ballpark estimate of what we think the revenue that they generate may be. Based on when you get the signs fixed, based on the, uh, the number of speeders that go through during the school hours? Just a ballpark.
Sure. Yeah, we could, we could look at that and, and, you know, pretty soon, I mean, we also may be able to pull some data from some of the other neighboring communities that have them operational and see how they're doing as well. To see what the results are. But see, I'd be more interested if, you know, even if there's a hundred speeders in a week, did that reduce it down to thirty speeders? You know, cause obviously the, the greatest risk is no one wants to see a kid hurt, you know, at any time. And we do have a lot of kids that cross that road.
It's amazing at three AM in the morning on, uh, when you go into work at three AM in the morning, how many people don't speed? But they will sure pass you going through the academy on a double yellow line, because you're doing twenty-five or thirty miles an hour. And they're late for work or something, so I'm amazed at that. And even your videos showing coming into town, yeah, so, hmm, yeah.
Hundred percent, I agree with you. Yep. These aren't for school hours. I mean, these are only for school hours, so.
Yeah, just, just for those that are listening too, I have one of our law enforcement officers, when he gets back from his training, he's, um, he's gonna pop in and try to do a couple four AMs and three AMs for us to be around, so. Just because I, I experienced that too. Many times.
All right, let's move on. Let's go to the discussion of the email link to all council members. Joe, had, you had something, right?
Yeah, so I'm trying to speed this one up. So I made the original suggestion about adding council at my Montverde. Um, I don't really, personally, I don't wanna spend legal fees for that. So one of the other, I guess, a compromise, a fair compromise I think would work would be, and I can show council this then. But underneath our meet the council page here, um, underneath each council member, if we just add our email addresses underneath there with a simple icon, that our residents can just click to copy it, that way they can just paste it into an email, it, it solves the problem. It can easy, it makes it a lot easier to do and it's a simple website update, so.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, if everybody's okay, and maybe I can even make that as a direct link, that'll open an email up.
You, you could do both. You could make the email address a direct link and then add a little button to the right that's a copy.
Sure.
And then hit that as well.
I think that would satisfy our sunshine law requirements and stuff.
Everybody okay with that? Carol, yep. Alan, you okay with that?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, all right. Let's move forward with that.
We were just discussing whether Santa's pictures, uh, actually are enjoyable. I guess that's kind of my question.
Alrighty, if you would please, Anita, resolution twenty twenty-five one eighty-seven.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Montverde, Florida, approving task order proposal dated August twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, between the town of Montverde and Woodard and Curran Incorporated for Design Permitting Bidding, Project Management, Construction Administration, and Fiscal Grant Administration of Stormwater Improvements, funded by the Supplemental Appropriations for Hurricanes Fiona and Ian, authorizing the town manager to execute the agreement, providing for an effective date.
So this is more or less, um, you wanna explain it to us? Come on up. Put your name again.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, um, uh, town staff. Scott Shen with Woodard and Curran. Yeah, so this is the, this is an agreement for design and services during construction, the engineering portion of the stormwater project we've been talking about tonight. It was, uh, um, so we are developing the facilities plan right now. That should be completed here in another week or so. Uh, submitted to the DEP for approval. Uh, design would be the next step. One of the reasons we're doing this now, we're trying to compress the schedule a little bit. If you recall, this was originally the twenty million dollar agreement for the wastewater system in town. That, uh, rather than giving back to, rather than giving it back, um, we convinced them to convert this over to a stormwater project. So, um, the, these monies are still, um, subject to federal timelines, which means the, you know, the ultimate end date of the grant is like May of twenty twenty-eight. There's still a design, uh, there's still a design piece of that that is currently supposed to be finished by, um, middle of next year. So, um, while we're submitting the facilities plan, we know what's in it. We, we, we have the volume and the idea of what the projects are. We went ahead and put this together so we can initiate the design without waiting too much in between, cause we, cause we came around a tight timeline. So again, the services here are for, uh, design of the improvements that are in the facilities plan. We'll be coming back to you here shortly with a, you know, an overall presentation of the facilities plan itself. But again, this would be for design and services during construction, which would be construction administration, overall management of the grant, a lot of the things that Paul talked about with your grants in general.
So you just need us to agree to this? Okay.
Yeah, it's the, it's a task order.
You guys have any questions? I'll open it up to the public. Anybody wanna talk about it? Okay, I'll bring it back to council. Any questions, any conversation?
Part of this, um, was for sewer as well, correct? Part of the design and everything, that was all done when, for the sewer as well?
No, um, this, everything in this agreement is for stormwater.
Correct.
The, the origin, this, originally the grant was for sewer, although when we were doing the sewer system, we were using other funding sources for the initial planning. So none of this was, none of this was used for that.
All right, so my, my question I have is the, the cost that we're spending. So we're, it's about eighteen percent. Under normal circumstances, normal municipal engineering is ten to fifteen. So that's why I'm asking about if it was, if we did other previous things with that. Or if not, then my question is, why is our, why are we so high with that cost?
So, so, so the design portion of that is eleven percent of the, um, of the total. And, um, part of that is because of the, I mean, there's a, there's a, it, it was actually written, that, that amount is actually written into the grant agreement itself. So it's, it, all the, all the amounts that are proposed there are within the constraints and the allowances, um, of the grant agreement. We just, we went ahead and kinda followed that. That, and it's eleven percent on the design piece of it. The other part of that is for services during construction. So that would be for, uh, again, construction administration and then fiscal and grant administration doing all the compliance related to the grant.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, and I did request versus bringing you separate agreements, that you just make one all-inclusive. Cause normally on a project this size, you're right, Mr. Morinelli, they, he would have brought, here's the design, and once the design's done, we go to bid. They would have brought the construction management thing. We're such a time constraint here, if we don't spend this money, we're gonna lose it. But we, we wanted to get it all labeled out and agreed to.
Anybody else have a question? Okay, need a motion to approve or motion to deny?
I so approve resolution twenty twenty-five one eighty-seven.
You second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And say nay. All right, you move on to, if you would please, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-eight.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Montverde, creating and appointing a municipal canvassing board to serve for the November fourth, twenty twenty-five town election, providing for duties and a term, and providing for an effective date.
Alrighty, um, this is, um, a canvassing board is, it has to be set up for each ci- city when the election happens. Um, it's hard for us to get it together for that every time. People just have to sit there and wait for a problem such as, correct me if I'm wrong, but the ones I've seen were, um, they question the signature and then they have to look at it and either they agree or disagree, that's the person, signature, put the vote in or don't put the vote in. But do, can you explain that any better?
Yeah, and all the canvassing board members have to go through training with the supervisor elections office. Um, there's a four-hour course on a portion of it, another couple hours on additional course, um, for handwriting analysis. Um, and then you have to appear at certain meetings, have to be there, as the mayor said, to look at any issues that come up on ballots. Um, sometimes people will put two ballots in a mail in envelope and that's not permitted. And so they have to make a final decision on whether that gets counted, um, whether that's the signature of the person, how the ballot was filled out. Did they bubble in the circle like they were supposed to? Did they write things? So issues come up and they have to be there, um, for that, as well as the certification.
You wanna finish up or?
Yeah, just my last thought, I, I would just wanna say I'm appreciative to, uh, City of, of Groveland. Um, they've offered to do this since they have an election going as well and be our canvassing board. Um, last year it was really tough, because the elections happened the week of Montverde Day and our staff is pretty, uh, strung out. So it was, um, this was a, a great pleasure that they would do that for us and act as our canvassing board.
So that's more or less long and short of it. It's, Groveland said that they would help us out and watch over it. It's pretty easy. It's like when they have the EMS, uh, like Mascot used to say, they can help us with our calls for EMS, same thing. I'll open it up to the public. Anybody wanna talk about it? Okay, I'll bring it back to council. It's, um-
Question.
Go ahead.
Will we need to going forward every year have to have a canvassing board?
Every year, yeah.
Yes, we do. We've, we've acted ourselves and have done it in the past.
Well, I was just curious, and I remember years past, uh, my wife was involved in the election process. And I don't remember having a canvassing board. It was usually in-house with the votes who were working there. They were in contact with Taverres, the office and so forth when they had problems. And I can't remember what the official title is, the, um, uh, not the deputy, uh-
That's here though, when, at this building. This is in Taverres.
Are you thinking of the polling workers?
Right.
Yeah, that's a different task, different duties.
Yeah, it's totally separate.
But they do a lot of that too, you know, and that's why I was wondering, uh, got it?
Right, but like Anita said, they go in there and they, they do something on there and then they put it in the thing. And now they get it. And now it's, it's a problem. And, um, we need somebody to make a decision.
Will we be doing this? I know we're doing it, I think, every, every year, so will Montverde need to create our own canvassing board?
Every time we try to put it together, it doesn't work.
Well, well, every year we've been the canvassing board since I've been here. Uh, we have to sign three of our staff members to it. It, it just falls on the week of Montverde Day. So, uh, and I thank Anita for asking. So that's the biggest thing, is, um, Groveland has, um, been able to step up and, and fill that void for us. And generally, you just sit there. It's, you know, there's not problems.
And this appointment would be just for this year. So next year, when there's an election, we can see who might also be having an election and reach out to them to see if they would cover it, if it's something that you're not able to do because of Montverde Day.
Well, we can just do it with Mount Verde.
No. No cost. If, if we had to do it, there is a cost, because it pulls our staff out for all the training and things along that. We have three staff members, I think, is what we have to pull? Three and alternatives, right?
To have three and alternates, and then you have to, everybody has to do the training. I sat through the training this year. It was my first time and it's a lot. It's a lot of training.
So it is a blessing for a small community that Groveland's helping us. I highly recommend approval, please.
So anyway, um, there's no more need of motion. One way or the other.
I, I moved, we, we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash one eighty-eight.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And say nay. I just have it. And I think that's it. You got anything? We're gonna have a meeting-
Tomorrow, six thirty.
Tomorrow for our budget. So if you wanna come learn, learn about our budget, it's real exciting. Be here tomorrow, six thirty. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Done. Thank you.